Good evening to those that are at home and online. We are going to open up our public hearing for our Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-2. This is on finance, budgeting, and purchasing. Currently, I have six residents that would like to speak. And I'm fine. I allotted plenty of time, so I'm okay with five minutes. If you need less time, that's fine. If you need a little bit more, I think I can work around that. First up is Adely Connelly. My apologies.
I appreciate your time.
Can you just state your name, please? This is for public record. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Adely Connelly. I live on Prospect Road in Mount Airy. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you about the Charter Amendment. I oppose this Charter Amendment. We, as citizens of Mount Airy, elected a mayor and a town council. We did that purposely to make sure that they would be checking each other, that there would be that check and balance system. By removing those financial duties from the mayor, it's giving the council an opportunity to spend money without the mayor's approval, even without his knowledge. I don't agree with that. I think that's wrong. And if this council is really determined to do something like that, then it should be left up to the citizens who elected our mayor and town council, and it should be put on a ballot for whether it's a special election or we had our election in May, for the citizens to vote on whether or not we should have this kind of Charter Amendment. I just don't think it's appropriate for it to be decided just by this body. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Rick Blaschler? Excuse me?
Okay, I thought I was going to do this in Citizens' comments, but this is just as well.
Rick, do you just mind stating your name, please?
Rick Blaschler, Nottingham.
Thank you, sir.
I'm just going to read from a statement, and it'll make it more clear than it would be otherwise. As is in the, with the U.S. Constitution, the town charter is the people's document, not that of the town council. The movement of Mount Airy should revise the selected sections of the town charter as neither a citizen requested nor is it citizen-driven. It is the brainchild of some of the members of the town council. The essence of the changes proposed by certain council members serves to reduce the authority of the mayor and substituting that authority into the position of the town administrator and the council themselves. Again, it is certain council members who are proposing these changes, not the people whom they serve. On Friday, the Frederick News Post ran a banner article that began, quote, "Changes are coming to Frederick's governing document for the first time in nearly a decade as the city creates a committee to examine its charter," post quote. The entire document is going to be subject to citizen review. Frederick is not affixing piecemeal bandages to cherry pick portions of their charter. The entire charter is going to be reviewed, something Mount Airy has not done in the eighteen years of my residence here. Frederick's mayor will appoint a committee of citizens that will review the charter and make citizen-originated recommendations for change to the citizens' document. These citizen-originated recommendations will then be considered by the elected council, and that's as it should be. The citizens must decide wherewithal resides the authority to govern, not the town council. Finishing up. Frederick's charter was last reviewed in 2007. As an aside remark here, I recall a number of years ago, in dealing with the charter, I made a comment publicly that the Mount Airy Town Charter is in dire need of a complete review. I remember looking at the table up here, and the town attorney at the time was sitting there silently nodding, he said, "And nothing has been done yet," and that's been about ten years ago. I don't believe that a citizen review of our charter has ever been performed. If it has, I've never heard of it. A citizen review is long overdue and is not a job to be assumed by the council. It is in an attempt to increase their own authority and power. It is my belief that all current efforts to change the charter should be dropped now and start looking at a citizen review and let the people do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Richards? Excuse me? Just state your name, please.
Mark Richards, North Main Street.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. I have yet to hear evidence of a need for this change in the charter, so I stand opposed to it. I've known Mayor Hushour for quite some time. Our sons worked scouts together. I feel that he's a man of integrity, of judgment. If there are reasons that can be articulated here tonight why the council feels that it can do a better job than the mayor, then I would welcome you to convince us otherwise. But to this point in time, I think that Mayor Hushour would be a perfect person to carry the role that mayors before him have done for the citizens of Mount Airy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Danny Washwell?
Good evening. I'm Danny Washwell. I reside in Twin Ridge Community. Previously, the town council passed Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2021-2 by a three-to-two vote at the June Town Council meeting, which provided a check and balance regarding finance, budgeting, and purchasing powers, which made logical sense. The mayor would have to consult with the town administrator regarding financial issues, oversee the budget, and would not be able to waiver water bills. The town administrator would oversee the day-to-day operations. However, at the July Town Council meeting, Councilmember Demoter decided that the Charter Amendment should be revisited based upon his networking with other municipal leaders at the MML Conference, which he attended in June. After some thought, he believed that changing the chief financial officer from the mayor, which is what it is currently, to the town administrator would be in the best interest for our town and town staff. Councilmember Reed agreed with his recommendations. We are giving examples of all three municipalities, such as Bel Air, which has a population similar to Mount Airy, as well as Rockville, population of sixty-seven thousand people, Westminster, population of nineteen thousand people, and Bowie, which has a population of fifty-eight thousand people, whose town administrators were the CFO. As you can see, most of the examples far exceed our population. Not a compelling reason to make a drastic change to our current charter. The new Charter Amendment that you have in front of you this evening has the following changes. The town administrator would be the chief financial officer, not the mayor. The town administrator would oversee the budget, not the mayor. The town administrator would prioritize the expenditures, not the mayor. The town administrator would only be able to sign checks, not the mayor. This, in my opinion, is not logical at all. The town should always have two people who can sign checks. And I can attest, when I sat at that table, that that was an issue. So that should definitely be stricken or changed back to the previous language. The town administrator would only have authorization to use the town credit card, not the mayor. The town administrator would oversee all liens, including any against water bills, not the mayor. The town administrator would be able to do such things in relation to the fiscal or financial affairs of the town as he or she deems necessary, not the mayor. I believe there is a pattern here, and it is not a good one. To make matters worse, the mayor would be relegated to taking the budget, et cetera, to the town council to be reviewed and approved. The mayor's powers would be diminished, which, in my opinion, would be a detriment to the town. Our charter has served us well over many years. Periodically, it may have to be changed, but these changes are drastic and far-reaching. We elected a mayor to oversee the town operations at a high level, and we employ a town administrator to oversee the day-to-day operations. At the end of the day, the best decisions for the town will be for both the mayor and town administrator to work in conjunction with each other to ensure there is a check and balance for the town. I strongly oppose a Charter Amendment upper adoption this evening and question what the real reason is for suggesting such overreaching changes. If you question, if you truly want what is best for the town, please go back to the drawing board and resurrect the language that was initially passed in June against Charter Amendment 2021-2. We need all branches of government to work together to ensure the right decisions are made for our town. The Charter upper adoption tonight is in direct conflict. Put that vote down. Thank you.
Jim Molesworth?
I'll just save my for the two-minute public comment, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Yeah.
You have five now.
Well, I want to touch on three subjects.
Okay.
That's okay?
So I was saying okay to the public comment, not to the... So if you want to save for public comment, that's totally fine.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Jim.
We'll do that.
Yep, no problem. Nick?
Yep.
Could you say your last name, please?
Yes, Levati.
Thank you so much. You say it much better than me. Thanks, Nick. Go ahead.
So, all right. Well, I can't do the job, but I'll just, people said earlier, but I agree. I oppose this. I think it's a bad idea. There's a reason why we have checks and balances. I think that is unwise to diffuse decision-making in this regard, because I think it's good to have an idea, and a person can overlook that, vice versa. I think you're saying very clearly, I'll repeat it. Also, like this, also emphasize in a more emotional way that the town is wonderful here. I love it here. I think it's a great area. And why is that? Is it because you've had a council making these decisions? Have you had a person or people that were responsible being able to make those decisions and move autonomously, independently, within their position of authority? And I think there's a good case for that. And as an expression I said earlier, an engineer would say, "A course designed by committee is a hippopotamus." Okay? And it's true. It is. It's a real, true thing. If you ever try to design things with eight people involved, it's chaos. Nothing gets done. It's a bad idea. If you're going to do this, you're going to regret it. I think a lot of people in the city will regret it, and I oppose it. I think it's a very, very bad idea. And if you want to do it, ask the town. Put it to a vote, or however it's got to get done. I believe, I really do, that people would say, "No, we'd like to have the checks and balances, and we'd like to have it the way it was, because it seems important, so..." That's all. So, yeah. And also, as the gentleman said, also very clearly, I emphasize that. It's kind of irritating when people try to do things and there isn't even been an evidentiary basis in why you're doing it. Like, why? What is the motivation? What are the advantages? Have we said money? I haven't heard anything. I don't know. There's nothing. So it would be interesting to know that. Why exactly? Is it being pushed? I don't know. I haven't heard anything about it, so it's not clear. Therefore, it should be also a case to be made in public. That's all I can say. I don't repeat anything but this. Thank you.
Thank you. There were, I don't want to point out the late people, but did anyone else wanted to quickly speak on, we're doing our public hearing on 2022-2, which is on financing? Did anyone else want to speak for that, or are you just waiting for the council meeting?
Can we make a comment now?
It's only for, as long as it has to do with the Charter Amendment Resolution.
But can I make a comment on that and also have a comment later during the public?
You can still reserve your time for the public comment.
I could do both.
So you can do, do your Charter Amendment, save the rest for the public comment. And then if you could just state your name for the record.
Lee, what they communicate, South Main Street.
Thanks, Lee.
Yeah, basically echoing what they've been saying about Charter Amendment, because what is the advantage to that? Is it, you know, maybe it's based on kindness or it's based on different factors and stuff? You know, maybe there's other ways that we can figure out something besides changing out the Charter Amendment to resolve whatever internal issues there are, or maybe there isn't, and it's just a new idea that you want to implement. But everyone else pretty much said what I was thinking, rather than what I can articulate it, so thank you.
Thank you, Lee. All right. Not seeing anyone else that wanted to come up and speak at this time, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing on Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-2, Finance, Budgeting, and Purchasing, and we'll get started at 7:30 sharp for our regular town council meeting. Thank you. Thank you to those that are attending in audience and in person, and those that are attending online. We appreciate it. I would like to welcome everyone to the Mount Airy Town Council Meeting of September 12th, 2022. Before we get started with our Pledge of Allegiance, I have a statement that I would like to read. We have found out today about the passing of a true Mount Airy treasurer in Denny A. Hall. Over his lifespan, Denny contributed to many organizations in town and touched the lives of thousands of residents. Denny served as president, vice president, the treasurer, commissioner, and coach in MEA for a number of years, and he served for over forty years. He was the treasurer of the Mount Airy Lions Club, also the treasurer of the Chamber of Commerce and the Prospect Methodist Church. Denny was often seen changing out the marquees at the ends of Main Street. He was seen as the master of ceremonies at the Historical Society's Hall of Fame functions every spring. He was retired from New Windsor Bank and will be missed by all. I would like for, after the Pledge of Allegiance, that we take a moment of silence for the passing of Denny A. Hall. If you would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. It was my understanding, Mayor, we're going to hold off on the certificates, or do we have some?
No, we're going to hold off.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. I did notice Commissioner Boucher. Sorry, sir. Did you want to come up and say any words, or you just want to say hello?
I'll say hello to everyone.
Okay, very good, sir.
Well, it's a tremendous honor to be here today. I was telling the mayor while I walked in, you have more of an attendance at a town hall than we have in commissioner of government. And I think that says a lot about this institution being so closely connected to the people. I'm here trying to follow what's going on. I like to tell people that in the town of Mount Airy and all the other municipalities, the councilmen and the mayors have more authority than I do, so I'm actually subservient to them in this jurisdiction. So I'm here to pay attention and learn and try to hear what the people want and offer whatever support I can in the future. So thank you very much for recognizing me. Have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And thank you for serving, too.
You're welcome.
And best of luck.
I mean, all luck I can get.
Yes, sir. All right. At this time, we're going to move into public comment. Can I just see by a show of hands? Oh, one, two, three, four, five, six. I have seven. You want to go again, Mark? Okay, that'll give eight. We'll do two minutes at this time. Roxanne, I saw you first.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I don't like talking to the backs of the people. Roxanne Hemphill Park Avenue. I'm here not as planning commissioner chairperson, but as a member of the MASTS Task Force, which stands for Mount Airy Senior Task Force. I just want to remind everyone, we do have a phone number and we do have an email address, where if you have, citizens have questions or you just have questions about what we're doing as far as helping the citizens, I'd like to, I forgot to bring my poster, but the MASTS phone number is 301-703-1428. That's 301-703-1428. It is manned and answered, and you will get a response back from that phone. We also have an email, MASTSofMountAiry, and "Mount" is spelled out, that's all one word, at yahoo.com. Once again, that's MASTSofMountAiry at yahoo.com. And I'd like to briefly go, we have been, we have sponsored buses for the seniors to the farmer's market. We are getting ready to schedule listening sessions for different senior groups of seniors to see exactly what their needs and concerns are. We're looking to achieve the livable community's designation. And we're also looking into, we have this issue where part of us are in Carroll and part of us are in Howard. And Frederick, thank you. I don't know why I said that. And when it comes time to get to your doctor, if you want transportation, they won't take, if you're in one county and your doctor's in the other, they won't take you totally to the other county. So we're looking, Mary Hushour's been doing an excellent job looking into different possibilities and ways that we can help the seniors to get there without having them transport themselves or to pay for transportation. I think that's about it.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I saw a young lady up front, right here, please.
Thank you very much for taking my remarks. I'm going to read something that one of you was quoted on during a recent meeting. This is how it's...
I didn't even state your name and if you're a town resident or not.
Monica Mansfield. No, I am not in the two-one or in the municipal limits.
I restarted your time.
Thank you. Quote, "There's no other way to say it. I'll try to say it softly. It's a little bit of a slap in the face to the citizens and to us as council members." You know, we had a workshop, a second workshop, on Green Tree with a lot of public comments. Charest, "The council members gave a lot of comments, and the plan I see before me is the exact same plan that came to the workshop. There's nothing new here that reflects comments that were provided at the workshop. So that's a disappointment. I don't believe that your current plan is in harmony with surrounding land uses. It's still, to me, pretty much a cookie cutter townhouse development with a little shopping center next to it." And then the third point that I don't think you meet for the ordinance is, again, creating a mixture of office, retail, cultural art, recreational, residential uses while protecting the character of surrounding neighborhoods and the overall natural environment. I think you're missing the boat there as well. So we've talked ad nauseam to you all about Green Tree, and you know that we are not in favor of it. And you understand why. We don't need to explain any more to you. At this point, it's your decision. But you made, sir, excellent points. And that's why I utilized them, because I couldn't have said it better. And so we're asking you to not compromise, to not settle, to not sell Mount Airy to the highest bidder. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, come on up. And then I saw the three gentlemen in the back. I got you.
Mark Richards, I live on North Main Street. On August 23rd, Route 27 was closed due to a crash involving hazardous materials. I want to emphasize the point that Route 27 and Main Street are the only two north-south routes that carry traffic through the town of Mount Airy. Traffic was backed up on North Main Street all the way to the northern intersection of Route 27 and North Main. It was at a standstill. Fortunately, there were no fire department responses that were required because the fire department couldn't get by because of the hazardous materials spill as well. And if you have to go to downtown Mount Airy to try to get to Lorraine or anyplace else with traffic backed up on a two-lane roadway where nobody can pull over because there are sidewalks and curbs, that's obviously a problem. So the reason why I'm making this point is when we are approving developments, especially high-density developments, we have to continue, we have to consider the development that's going on around us. This town is not operating in a vacuum. Development is going on all around us. The people that are making those decisions need to be on top of where the development occurs and the traffic flows through town. Eventually, there's going to be at least one traffic light in the center of town, at Center Street, when it comes through. Most likely, soon afterward, Prospect Road. That in itself is going to slow traffic tremendously. And if you look at where the entrances and exits are to the town parking lots, you'll see how quickly the vehicles will line up in queue. So please be aware of that. High density is not what we need in Mount Airy.
Thank you. One of the three gentlemen in the back, that's fine. And then, sir, and then Tim, and then I got you again, sir. Absolutely.
Hi, Jim Molesworth, 201 Flower Court, Mount Airy. Thank you for remembering Denny A. Hall. I'm proud to say he was my friend, and he will be missed. So the reason, other than Denny...
I'll start your time over.
Thank you. A few weeks ago, we were visited by a county commissioner, which has historically been a rare occasion. We went almost thirty years at one point in time with no visits by our county commissioners. And he made three points that I would just like to share with you. One was, he thanked us for our vote as a town. We apparently put him over the top in the primary, and he's running unopposed for state delegate, so he will be our new state delegate. So that was one point. Second point, he made clear to us that he was in favor of preserving historical buildings and that he would do his best to help us with grants and funding and anything he could do at the state level. And the third point he made was that he felt a weakness in Carroll County government was that the county is not really run by elected commissioners. It's run by unelected staff. And that's kind of the direction that you're leaning with this Charter Amendment. So I support all the comments that the folks made, and the county commissioner made the same point. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, and sorry for your loss.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is Frank Dertzball. I've lived and worked in Mount Airy all my life, and I am a taxpayer. I have been a building contractor for over forty-five years and worked on various buildings in this town, including the Flatiron Building. The, have you all gotten a copy of that engineering report that we made, that the task force created?
Are you talking what the item that Jim Molesworth sent around?
Yes.
I know I got it in my email, should be in all the emails.
Just want to quickly reference it, just based on time.
No, I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of it at this point. If any citizens would like a copy of it, we have some of it here. That group spent three hours with me included, looking over that building. "The town is tasked with making intelligent and well-informed decisions to the benefit of the taxpayers. These decisions are to benefit the majority of the taxpayers and promote the well-being and charm that makes Mount Airy unique. Tonight, I am very disappointed in the decisions that some members of this council made recently concerning the Flatiron Building, in particular, the vote that was taken to demo the Flatiron Building at the end of the council meeting without due process for public input and consideration of options for the building. And there was a lack of qualified reputable information used to come to the vote taken." These included, but were not limited to, ignoring the independent engineering reports from 2012 and a report from this past February, relying on unsubstantiated opinions of non-professional observers as to the assessment of the building's structural status and safety. Third, relying on a town survey that was way outdated. Every day is a new day, and a survey is only good for the date it was done, not months or years later.
Can you just wrap up, please? Can you just wrap up, please?
Relying, nothing I have heard you members say against saving the building could be dealt with at all. Building remodeling issues have a give and take and require thorough review and analysis. When there is a serious group of citizens that are willing to devote volunteer time to do their homework to assess the Flatiron Building and its potential benefit for the town, you should think twice about your decision to demo the building. Our review concurs with the two previous engineering reports as to the building that has very few structural issues and none that are of a major consequence to the life or use of the Flatiron Building. In my opinion, if you insist on spending another $25,000 on a fourth engineering report, I believe this demonstrates a waste of taxpayer money, and I believe it is an effort by the council members who need to find something wrong with this building to satisfy their desire to ignore public input and justify the demo of this building without analyzing all the viable options. You don't need another engineering report until a feasibility and concept design is completed by the task force or some other group. Time is not an issue with this project. History and small-town charm have a value you can't necessarily put a dollar value on. And just to qualify my view as a building professional, I could take the engineer you want to hire, and we could go to each one of your homes, and I can almost assure you that we will find something structurally wrong with your home. With that in hand, I doubt you would put your house in the same position you want to put the Flatiron Building today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you, okay, and then will you go after him? Thanks, Tim.
It's me again.
Hi.
All right.
Just your name again, please.
My name is Nick Flaherty.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. I didn't catch the previous gentleman's name, but he made the case for our previous issue earlier, why a town council, when it has powers to do what they're doing, is not a good idea. Because obviously, a lot of people care deeply about the Flatiron Building, and when they can make these decisions like that, and people don't agree with it, and it seems to be done in darkness, and then also with these engineering reports that seem to be getting ignored, making a stronger and stronger case as to why the first issue should be, you know, done away with. So I think that's pretty clear. And I'd also like to touch on the fact that what he did make a good point was, with the distinctness of our town, it's a distinct building, and I think what makes towns like Mount Airy unique is the distinctness. And if you're going to break some eggs to make an omelet, you want to break that egg, what kind of omelet are you going to make with that? What are you going to put in its place? It doesn't seem to make any sense to me to tear down something and then, what, put a parking lot there, a playground? I don't understand. It doesn't seem to me like there's any good plans in that regard. And you're taking away a lot of character, which makes Mount Airy unique in regard to all of Maryland. I looked around. You think about famous cities, and what are their icons? Golden Gate Bridge, Eiffel Tower, now, obviously, this is Mount Airy. It's not that, it's one of those things. However, it is, you only have so many old buildings like that downtown. How many do you got left? A dozen? You want to tear one down? And then what? What are you going to put up instead? I don't, it doesn't make any sense to me. Sounds to me like somebody's making decisions about the input of the public, and I bet that a lot of Monarian people who like downtown and the way it looks would agree with me, just from the general consensus, the people here tonight and people I've spoken with in my neighborhood. I don't think it's a good idea, and I don't think it's the will of the public, and I think if it should be done, it should be put to a vote at a minimum. And I think that's fair. They can't build buildings like that anymore. I am too a builder, by the way, I didn't mention that, but I do have some bona fides in that regard. I'm not speaking out of ignorance.
Just please wrap up.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that is, they don't build buildings like that anymore for a reason. Sometimes it's a good thing. However, you can't build that anymore either. You can tell that the buildings here are new, they're modern. And it just takes away from the character of the town. You have this facsimile of a Disneyland-type thing of what an old, small downtown's supposed to look like, and you just can't replicate that. So whatever people's plans or their imagination is that they're going to rebuild a building that's as nice as that one is, it's just not realistic, and it isn't going to happen. So it's a good idea that we protect it, do something with it, make investigations, get monies from somewhere else to get it done. The federal government's got money, Historical Society, wherever, private donation organization, there's people out there who care, and I think we should reach out to them and put the building to good use for the city. And I think that will attract people, because nobody's going to come here to look at a strip mall. That's just not how it works. Take my word for it, I've lived in a lot of towns, a lot of tourist areas, we can talk about it some other time. I've lived abroad, from California to Maine, I'm from the Midwest myself, I've lived in Europe. And what attracts people to these cool, old towns is the cool, old buildings, okay? And you just cannot, you just can't make those. It doesn't work that way, it just doesn't. So I would strongly recommend that they drop this idea that the building gets demoed or dropped and it's footprint, I think it's a terrible idea, and you'll regret it. I think we all regret it, and the town will regret it. And you're only going to have, the thing you're going to have left is a picture in the Historical Society of the building that used to be there, a beautiful building, and you're going to have some, I don't know, generic structure there or a vacant lot until someone decides to develop that little lot. And it's, is that what you want left? I don't think anybody really wants that. I understand. I'm going now. So there you go. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Lee Higuit, 1808 South Main Street. At the beginning, I was, it kind of felt impartial to the Flatiron Building. I was just kind of like, it's a building. You know, I didn't really know much about it, didn't really, you know, feel one way or another about it. But then, you know, I've been coming to some of these meetings every now and then, and decided to stick around late, you know, 11, past, almost midnight, you know? And then the vote was, you know, made to tear it down, which was kind of like taken aback, and I was kind of like, whoa, what's going on with that? It's, you know, it hit me a little bit differently, because I didn't realize that it was part of the character of downtown and stuff. But I still wanted to keep an open mind to it. I wanted to like see, you know, should it be torn down? Should something else go up there, you know? Maybe it is unsafe, maybe all these rumors are, you know, going on with it. But, so I, you know, joined the task force with them, got to tour it with a bunch of different people and get to see the inside of it. I've got a long background of building and, you know, engineering mind, I worked for an engineering company. But, you know, getting to look inside of it and really getting to understand it, you know, I was, I have pictures, drawn pictures, all kinds of stuff. I was thinking about doing a little presentation of it, but then I was like, oh, last time there was a presentation, after that, they voted to tear it down, so maybe I'm not going to, you know, give a presentation. But, you know, I've been measuring the road, measuring all kinds of stuff around there. You know, if we can do a passageway through there, the funding looks like, there's a lot of different resources that are coming together for it. And, you know, I'm really, you know, just going to say that if you want to put forth a little bit more money that's set aside to do a structural analysis, you know, that's good, but I also think that we could wait a little bit longer and put that money towards structural analysis combined with what our plan is and vision is for it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right. Thank you for everyone for respecting your time. We greatly appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
I've been in the town for...
Can you just state your name, please?
Oh, Jerry Simon.
Thank you.
I've been in the town for about 10, 12 years, and I have come from a small town. And they watched what they did. Our downtown area stayed the same. They built everything out away from the town itself. And I don't want to see that erupted here. I mean, that Flatiron Building is the best. It is really nice. I've been in there a couple of times, and it's, you know, it's got character. And another thing, I was with the mayor when he was getting votes, and the people listened to him and told them what he, what they wanted. And they really respected Larry. And I think the people should have listened. I don't think you should try to take away his power. That's not what we voted for. So I think you need to listen to the people, because we voiced what we wanted, and you're not listening to us. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Two more? Two more, two minutes, and then we're moving on.
I keep coming here, Dave Pyatt, 705 Park Avenue. I keep coming here, not intending to speak, but things are said that I think have to be kind of corrected or cleared up. I was on the structural task force, and we went through the motions. You heard from two other professionals. I'd like to point out that I was certified once upon a time as a structural engineer. I have all the pedigrees and all that stuff and the certifications. But working with Frank and Lee, who have really hands-on experience, and reading the other reports that were done by professional engineers, there is no doubt whatsoever that at the current time, this building is safe, as safe as probably this building. Now, I'm not saying it's going to stay safe for another 100 years, but we have to somehow face up to the fact and own up to the fact that this building is safe. It's not, it's not something that we can question. And when you spend $25,000 to try to find something that isn't there, that doesn't do any good. It's safe. You can spend $100,000 and do another engineering study. I think you should take that money, the 25 grand, maybe add to it. We have made some preliminary headway as to where to go from here. How do we make this not so much a safety issue, but how do we refine it? How do we deal with some of the, you know, the, like, the, things like the bricks have to be repointed? That's fairly expensive. And internal, look at the internal structures as how we proceed, and use the money to do that, but not to go try to prove to whoever that this building is unsafe. I mean, that's just, that's just crazy. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Can you just say your, speak your name?
Sure. My name is Nikki Jeffries. I live a couple of streets away on Harrison Street, so I'm within city limits.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out something that hasn't been spoken about tonight, and that the bank building is getting this, you know, much-needed revitalization, which is fantastic. And with the Flatiron Building being essentially at the opposite end of Main Street, I feel like if we're able to revitalize that as well, it'll enable essentially two points of interest. So the pedestrians would be walking up and down Main Street and, you know, theoretically patronizing those businesses on Main Street as well. I feel like if the Flatiron Building goes away, you know, the bank building will get a lot of interest, it'll get a lot of people coming to see that, but it's a missed opportunity, I think, to just completely remove that building. I actually just realized, too, coming down south Main Street, you can actually see the Flatiron Building all the way from the cemetery. And I feel like, once that's gone, I mean, it's going to have a visual impact. So it was just something I wanted to point out, and thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you for everyone for being respectful of each other's time. I appreciate it. At this time, we're going to move into the approval of our council meeting minutes and closed meeting minutes for August 20, 22, Town Council Meeting Minutes, and August 20, 22, Closed Meeting Minutes for the provisions related thereto to consider the acquisition of real property and matters directly rated thereto, Woodville Road. I'll make a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any necessary corrections or additions that needed to take place? All right. Not hearing or seeing any? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry, Pam is on, sorry, Council Secretary Reed is on the phone. Apologize. Thank you, Pam. All those oppose? All right. Awesome. Our meeting minutes are passed. We'll move into our presentations for Mount Airy Police Department. Chief Reitz? We don't have any speakers. For, we have a task force option on the agenda. Sorry. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everybody. Chief Reitz with the Mount Airy Police Department, here with the monthly report for training and meetings. We've attended several meetings and training during the month, which include, one of our officers went through defensive tactics instructors training at the Maryland Police Training Commission, so he's now certified to train the department officers in defensive tactics. Command staff attended a Frederick County Child FC Center Multidisciplinary Team Meeting, Supervisors Meeting, as well as the Maryland Criminal Information Network Team Meeting at the Westminster Barrack. And we had a staff member attend the Patriots' Day Ceremony at Pine Grove Cemetery, the planning meeting for that as well. For community outreach, the town did receive a reimbursement from the county for the supplemental school patrols that we, that we conducted in unison with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office and the Frederick County Sheriff's Office as well. We put, the Carroll County side of the town did give us a reimbursement for our overtime that we used for that, and during the last days of school, in response to Uvalde School Shooting Tragedy. So that reimbursement from the county was approximately 48, almost $4,800. As far as community outreach, we also had several events this month that we participated in or provided support for. One of those was the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company Carnival, which ran through August 1st through August 6th. We had officers staged there for security and other issues. And we also conducted our national night out there, which was at the same time as the carnival, so we kind of engaged the public as well and did different things with engaging the public there and providing them with, with different types of opportunities to engage with the officers. We also attended the Celebrate Mount Airy event on August 27th, and the Patriots' Day Ceremony was just this past weekend for support as well. As far as calls for service for the month, we handled 505 calls for service. It was a 2022... It was a 20% decrease from July of 2022, which was 632 calls for service. And it was a 33% decrease from August of 2021 as well. Traffic enforcement, we conducted 51 traffic stops during the month. We issued 76 traffic citations, 36 warnings, five equipment repair orders. They did make three DUI arrests this month and had five other, five other traffic arrests. As far as criminal apprehensions, we made 13 criminal apprehensions for the month. Just a couple items of interest, there was a drug arrest where a firearm was recovered as well. When I recognized one of our officers, PFC Klezek stopped a vehicle for suspicious activity and tra- and a traffic violation resulted in the stop. He developed reasonable articulable suspicion, and he was able to request a K-9 from the Frederick County Sheriff's Office. We were fortunate enough to have one that was working at the time. The K-9 responded, did a drug scan of the vehicle, and alerted. And at that point, probable cause was established, and then they conducted the search of the vehicle and found a quantity of fentanyl in the vehicle, it was approximately 48 grams, and also a handgun that was loaded and also had 49 rounds of ammunition with it. And there was three apprehensions in that case alone. There was a couple other incidents in town where we're having a couple grab-and-go type of thefts from local businesses during the month of August. One occurred on 8/20 at the Carroll Fuels, located on East Ridgeville Boulevard, and the other occurred on 8/25 at the High Store located in Ridge Side Court. In each incident, a suspect requested the clerk to retrieve cigarettes from behind the counter to be purchased. When the clerk turned around, put them up on the counter, the suspect took them and ran out the building. And in each, in each incident, they ran to a vehicle that was parked outside, and they fled the area. And, and they were different, different, they weren't the same, apparently not the same groups, so, different, different descriptions. During the month, we had 33 Group A offenses. That was a 6% decrease from Group A offenses in July. During those, of those events, the month of July, larceny theft was the predominant Group A offense with 10 reported incidents. The second most predominant incident was drug narcotics offenses and fraud offenses with six each. Destruction of property came in with four reported offenses during the month. Assaults and counterfeiting and forgery and weapons violations, each had two incidents apiece. And there was one incident of extortion blackmail that was reported to the department. As far as Group B offenses, we had nine, nine Group B offenses, and that was a 26, 28% increase from July, which at that point was seven. So, we're only talking an increase of two incidents. There was no opioid overdoses during the month of August as well. So, that will be the department's report.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your report. I'll open it up to any questions by the council members or the mayor?
Yes. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your service. Thank you for all your department does. Couple of quick questions. So, I know there's Type A and Type B offenses, and I guess what, question I have is regarding burglaries and robberies and those types of crimes, what is our closure rate? In other words, you know, you've got X, X number of burglaries, burglaries reported. How many of those have been, come to closure and you've apprehended the suspects? How many are open?
Well, there was two burglaries. I'd have to look at, I'd have to look into that and find out if they've been closed or not. Forty years so far, it's been reported. And we've had one robbery that was reported. So, I'd have to look into that as well if it's been that closed case. So, I can't give you the numbers right now because they occurred several months ago.
Okay. And just really, it's not just for this month, it's just looking overall, you know-
Overall for the year.
Over the past year.
That's correct. That was this past year.
Okay. Second question, regarding drug and narcotic offenses, I'm just, I'm asking for a qualitative, I guess, judgment, but do you sense that those are going up over time in the town of Mount Airy, staying the same, fluctuating?
Yeah, this is a problem that's nationwide. It's just not here. We're probably in line with other communities. It's just, our problem is, is we, we are directly right off a main thoroughfare that involves the transport of narcotics, east and west, north and south. So, we do have those that come into town on occasion and stop by, and we end up encountering them.
Right.
So, yes, I mean, I, I don't feel that it's anywhere different than any other town, but what makes it more, more accessible through the interstate?
Okay. And I appreciate that. And as you know, and council members know, I, I actually went on a police ride-along last year, and I actually got to witness a drug apprehension, I guess that's the way to call it. So, I learned a lot by doing the ride-along. I'd like to do one again. You and I have chatted about that.
Absolutely.
I think I'm ready. But on, on the drug question, I'm very, I know it's one of those things that, you know, I know we can say, well, you know, it's, it's common in all small towns to some degree. I get the whole thing that we're off of Route 70. But, but I do have an interest in understanding, are, are these, are these going up over time? Or are they not? Maybe that's-
Well, it's, it seems that our apprehensions have gone up a little bit this month. But it pretty much is, when you look at it through, through a history, it's, it's pretty much consistent. So, I wouldn't say that we're in a, in a community where it's a predominant issue.
Right. Okay.
Most of ours is random encounters coming off the interstate and so forth. And yes, we do have people that use drugs in our community, and during every community itself, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Actually, I'll, I'll just close with a statement, and that is, because I was, as you know, I was very involved in the 2020 Community Survey through the Growth and Development Task Force. And there was a question, there's several questions on there about safety. And of all the different types of safety concerns regarding crime, drugs and drug use was cited as, as the biggest concern. Not necessarily that they thought it was prevalent, but of all the types of crimes that people would not want to see, that one ranked the highest. So, I think it's an obvious statement, but it's just that our community is very, you know, we're a very safe community. We want to stay that way. But drugs is one of those things that people really don't want to see encroached within Mount Airy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.[1032.72][1032.72][applause]
We'll move into the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, Fire Company Report. Bruce is here.
Hey, Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I actually have a quick conversation with Chief Doug?
Sure.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So, so obviously, I'm not at the meeting because I'm on vacation in Las Vegas. But one of the things we happened to stumble upon was a police initiative in Boulder City, just outside of Las Vegas, where they set up a booth on their Main Street to sort of promote Know Your Limit. And what they did was, you know, they, it was, it was a great deal of community outreach, but after you left a restaurant or a bar, you could voluntarily take a breathalyzer to understand what your limit is. And Chief Doug, I, I sent you a text. It, it was a fantastic program, and it is something that I think would benefit Mount Airy if we could have a conversation about it at a later date.
Okay, we could have a conversation, certainly, about that.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, I, you know, I, I spent like 10 minutes speaking to the officers, and they weren't taking IDs, they weren't asking questions. It literally was just an initiative to understand your limit, and nothing but beneficial results from that.
We've, we've actually done with the State Police and the Sheriff's Office at the Wine Fest, where we have, we have troopers and deputies up there with, with preliminary breath tests.
Oh.
Conduct random tests as well. But again, that's a much larger department. I don't know how, how big Boulder City is and how that equates to Mount Airy. So-
So, Boulder City had a population of about 13,000, so it's pretty close to Mount Airy. And it was the chief of police and the deputy police officer kind of out there on a street corner, connecting with the community.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yes, I mean, like I said, we can have a discussion about that, and I can get a little bit more educated on that as well, to, to see if that would be something that we could do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Sorry, Pam, I apologize. All right, Bruce, we're ready. Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Incident report for August, rescue calls, we had 102 in Carroll, 66 in Frederick, seven in Howard, and six in Montgomery, for a total of 101 rescue EMS calls. Fire, we had 17 in Carroll, 10 in Frederick, five in Howard, three in Montgomery, for a total of 35, which resulted in 119 calls for service in Carroll, 76 in Frederick, 12 in Howard, nine in Montgomery, for 216 calls last month. We are averaging seven calls per day. And this morning, around 11:30 or so, we had four simultaneous EMS incidents going down. Both of our units were out, and we had to get Newmarket and Lisbon to come in, but we just one right after the other. So, our number of calls for services continues to increase, and that's something we need to be aware of. I'd like to thank everyone for attending the carnival. It was nice to have the carnival back. We're still negotiating whether that will be the week for next year or not. There are some issues with the ride company, but we'll, as soon as we find out a date, we'll let people know, so you can get it on your calendars for next year. But it was good to see everybody and thank everyone for the support. We had our last barbecue drive-in on Sunday, and that was a big success. And so, those are finished for the year. But if you're still hungry, tomorrow night, we have the Memories Charcoal House fundraiser, where part of the tab for that day, we'll go to the fire company. There'll be activities, raffles, and things in the patio area up there. So, if you're in the area, please stop by and get something there at Memories to support the fire company. We are also cosponsoring the duck race on the 18th, so if you haven't adopted your duck, there are still plenty of ducks out there to be adopted. Poor little things, you know, they're homeless. Please try and, try and adopt a duck, you know, it's the right thing to do. But we'd like to have you do that. And also, there'll be the Heroes Poker Run for any motorcycle enthusiasts on the 24th. And, and then in October, on the 7th, we will have a Fire Safety Open House, because that week is Fire Safety Week, Fire Prevention Week. And so, there will be an open house that evening. And also, the auxiliary will be having a fried chicken and shrimp, I believe, buffet dinner up at the reception hall. So, a lot of activities, a lot of opportunities to put on some weight for the winner.
And breakfast must start soon, right?
Well, we're not, we're not starting the breakfasts, unfortunately. Maybe something in December, but we haven't, we're not doing those yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.[1367.92][1367.92][applause] All right. Next up is our Civil Air Patrol Report, given by Captain Rolf. Good evening, Captain.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. This is your Civil Air Patrol Report for August. Under Mission Significant Activities, we continue to provide aircrew support to the Bay Patrol flights, which is a wing-wide mission to support the Coast Guard over flights over the Chesapeake Bay during the summer months. That mission has completed as of Labor Day weekend. We also had two of our squadron members attend the Civil Air Patrol's National Conference out in Louisville, Kentucky this past month, which was a pretty eye-opening event and got us some good exposure with the national leadership. Under community support, we supported the Mount Airy Mile Running Event, held by the Rotary Club. We assisted with runner safety and road closures during that to keep the runners safe. We also provided pedestrian safety support to the Mount Airy Main Street Association's Wine and Cheese Event downtown. For qualifications and achievements, two more members completed their qualifications for Ground Team Member III, which makes them more capable to deploy in any kind of missions or support that we need. And we had one cadet complete his final milestone achievement, which, thank you, Mayor, for being present for that promotion. Under significant training, we conducted over six hours unmanned aerial system training flights. We also had one member completing all-day unmanned aerial system technician training to further build our capacity in that regard. And we had three cadets that went to summer encampments, both in Maryland and elsewhere in the country. Four of our cadets participated in orientation flights for the, this last month, three of them for the first time. For those that aren't familiar, this is an opportunity for the cadets to actually put hands-on controls of an aircraft in flight. And they have that opportunity to actually fly an airplane before most of them get a chance to drive a car. Yes. Kind of scary, right?[1473.30][1473.30][laughter] Membership growth, we actually had one new senior member, which is a returning cadet, who has since graduated high school and decided that he loves us so much, he came back. And we have established an initiative to recruit 11 veterans before November 11th to help build our senior member roles a little bit more. So, for those that are listening, if you're interested, please reach out. Operational status, our ground team remains fully mission-capable and ready. We are in the process of procuring a number of those UASs, the drones, to support our missions and build our capacity to integrate that with our normal operations. We've also established an internal cybersecurity support capability that we're just starting to get off the ground, and we'll be exploring how we can integrate that into our missions and actually provide some support to the community down the road. Full capabilities for that are still being figured out, and we're going to be exercising them later this month. Over the horizon, September's already been a busy month. We just did the 9/11 ceremony and are planning to support the Oktoberfest event later this month. We also had three members complete the Community Emergency Response Team Training this past weekend. And that's another way for us to provide that additional support to the community and hopefully actually build that outside of our own organization as well. We will be representing the entire Civil Air Patrol at the Anna Ronald County Emergency Preparedness Expo in Arnold Mills this coming weekend, and we have expected to participate in a wing-wide search and rescue exercise later this month. Depending on your questions, that's my report.
Captain, thank you for your report and appreciate everything that you're doing. I can see the mayor in my peripheral vision.
With my progresses, I can't see, I can't see Steve, so.
Do you just censure glare, maybe?[1575.82][1575.82][laughter]
Keep flying, Mayor, keep flying.
Don't, don't worry about it. Dave Pyatt's already given his opinion on that.[1585.01][1585.01][laughter] You're good. I just wanted to, for all that you do, I mean, this is kind of a minor thing to point out, but I thought at the 9/11 ceremony, your, your young Civil Air Patrol cadets do such a terrific job at the flag ceremonies. They look very crisp when they're out there doing that. And I appreciate all the community support that you're providing, have provided, and you're doing Oktoberfest, too. So, thanks so much.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.[1623.63][1623.63][applause] All right, very good. We're going to move into new business. We have several new items coming up, first being a road closure on Veterans Way. This is going to take place from Center Street to the Municipal Lot Crosswalk. This will take place on September 25th, from the hours of 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And this is a VFW members-only event. Council, you have your packet there in front of you. They are waiting an alcohol permit from the county. But regardless, I will make a motion for approval if anyone has any other questions or discussions. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. You also have a map that is attached, if you need a clarification. All those that are in favor of this road closure, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good. Next, we're going to move into approval of Kelly Fager Professional Development and Training Contract. This is presented by Councilwoman Galetti.
So, I have been working on a couple initiatives. One of them is Code of Conduct for Council, which seems to be a standard operating procedure in a lot of towns. And I've noticed it in county and some federal agencies. So, in the past, I thought of this because I don't know of any company or any government agency that doesn't do training with their employees. I work for a public school system, three of them actually, and we do all kinds of training, teamwork training. In the past, our town has done council workshops, civility class for the mayor and council, customer service training for staff, how to build a strong team, professional development class. And then, as early as 2020, emotional intelligence and coaching to review results with then three new council members. So, this is something I feel very strongly about, because we need to work together as a body. I know a lot of people in the public were saying, oh, how much money you want to pay to people to get along? That's not what it's about at all. Come talk to me and ask me, and I'll give you the information. It's about working together effectively as a team, with each other, for and with our mayor. You get dynamics in any company, any business, any body. You need to work together effectively. So, I got this proposal put together, again, based on past experience and precedent from the town, working with this training company, Kelly Fager Professional Development and Training. So, I don't, I think it's a better use- So I don't, I think it's a better use of money than spending $30,000 to sue the mayor if we get angry about something he does. I think we need to be effective. When I have people from the state coming to me at a totally unrelated event saying what's going on down there in Mount Airy? And I have people from the county saying something, I think we need to look in a mirror and look at that. And we need to work together and we need to get along. And there's nothing wrong with doing this kind of training to make us a more effective body that can work together as a team. So if anybody else on council has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
A couple.
Sure.
Couple comments and questions. So first, Councilmember Galetti, thank you for pulling this together. I know you're passionate about this. I think, I think it's always good, continuous improvement is always good in an organization and as an individual. When you first mentioned this at the last meeting, I think this was maybe labeled as civility training. And so I had a lot of questions about what that meant. But seeing the work scope and the contents of the training, I think it covers a lot of good areas. I think as a council and as a mayor, I think we're just, we're kind of in this interesting period in Mount Airy where we're, it's a very active time. We're dealing with a lot of issues, a lot of contentious issues regarding growth and development and other topics. And I think one thing that's important is diversity. And it's important to understand and be able to work with diverse people, diverse ideas, diverse approaches, because you never know where the best ideas are going to come from. And they may come from somebody that you may not be in full alignment with. So we want the best government we can provide for the citizens of Mount Airy. I see benefit to the training here and some of the elements. There is a part of me that, you know, I'm minorly, you know, impacted by the cost. And it's just a philosophical thing that as elected officials, we should be coming to our positions with a lot of these skills. $6,000 isn't a lot of money, but I'm very fiscally conservative. And I think about, well, that's $6,000. That could go towards another radar speed sign on a street in Mount Airy. That could go to the Mount Airy net, that type of thing. But with all that as background, I think this will be very valuable training for us. I think it's worth the expenditure of resources. And I support the training and thank you for pulling it together.
Thank you. And thank you for reminding me. One more thing I want to point out and then anybody else that wants to speak. So many, many years ago, I'm going to say probably going back to 2013, there was a council that comes in and as Councilmember DeBoer said, you're going to have different personalities, different ideas, different backgrounds. We have to agree to disagree and still work together. And that, it was a very contentious council. And they engaged the services of this company to work together as a team and it was very effective.
Did you have anything you want to say?
Nope, I'm good. I agree with everything that's been said.
Councilwoman Reed, did you have any comments?
I will refrain from any comments.
Okay, thank you. All right. All those, what is it, $6,000? Yep. All those in favor of approving the Kelly Fager Professional Development and Training Contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Four, four to one. We got you, Reed.
No, no, I would say yes.
No, I, we got you. We got you as a yes. Okay. I got her as a yes, I promise. Okay. Next up is the approval of the Axon, I hope I'm saying that right, Chief, Axon Taser contract renewal for the Mount Airy Police Department? Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
All right. You guys have the background there. I'm not going to read that. It's a five-year contract. The total overall cost is $44,848.86. This is over the five years. All of the five years equate to $8,969 minus the first year, 86 cents. And then the rest are 75 cents. And this is for Taser? Yes. All right. Does anyone have any questions, concerns that they would like to address with the chief?
Not really. I had an earlier question about the time of delivery on these. Chief answered that. As of now, they should be standard delivery time or sooner. Six to eight weeks, somewhere around there? Four to six weeks. And I'll just say also that this is an already approved expenditure in the current budget, I believe. So we're just pretty much approving the contract on this. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Is this by, oh, Axon Enterprise, sorry about that, I apologize. All right. All those in favor for the Taser contract, $44,848.86 over five years, provided to us by Axon Enterprise, all those approve, signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Thank you, Chief. All right. Next up is the approval of the amended ARPA funding expenditures plan. You have information in front of you. David, I'm sorry, can you come on up? I try to let you sit as long as possible. David, if you can just give us the nuts, what changed here? Or what's being amended, if you don't mind?
Sure. This comes as a result of them giving our second draw, which was a little bit increased. It was $4,662,000 and some change. What we did was we looked at what we had spent to date, what we anticipate spending to date, and made some adjustments in the existing columns. So the entire project list of nine items which you've approved, I think we amended it about six months ago when we were allowed to take the revenue allocation for the two non-water sewer projects. We have looked at those. We sat down with the accounting department, looked at where we were, where we were going. And we think we've done something that adjusted and expended all the funds in a manner that will reflect exactly what we were going for anyway. We were afraid of getting ahead of ourselves, but since the US Treasury decided, we'll just give you the money before you spend the first mount, we have it in hand. And the accounting department, the expenditures have a lot of paperwork. You've got that ordinance that's going to be introduced tonight. And then we adjust that furthermore. The revenues are easy, you know, the money comes in, just put it in the bank. But otherwise, we haven't really changed any of the projects that you've already approved. We've just increased some of them to where we anticipated them being. We had allocated a lot of money anyway, but we weren't going to spend it until it was here. Now it's here, so we did some minor adjustments.
Fantastic. In the, in the last column where it says running total, is that remaining amount or how much we've spent total?
How much we've spent.
How much we spent. Are we still, are we still looking good for the water meters? I know that's a good chunk of change that's already been spent for that. Are we still looking, looking okay for the water meters?
Yeah, they're just being delayed as far as us receiving them, but yes, we're, the mountain looks good, yes.
Okay, very good. That was my only question. Did anybody else have any comments or questions? Go ahead.
I do. David, thank you. Thank you for this. Thank you for everything you do as our town administrator. Item number seven, sewer capacity study. In terms of timing of when, I know a lot of these are already ongoing, but this study, when are we going to initiate this study?
And I should, that number should have actually moved over to the running total. That's completed. That is a final, oh, you got one more outstanding invoice?
Yes, one more outstanding invoices, but for the most part, it's completed. We're just waiting on the last invoice.
So and when that study's done, I'm assuming the council will get a copy of that study?
Yes.
Okay. Because obviously it's very timely in terms of we have a lot of growth and development proposals that we're reviewing and that seems like a study that's very timely. So I look forward to seeing that. All right. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Go ahead, sir.
I'll just make one quick comment. So, you know, in terms of, since we've been talking about mayoral duties and town administrator duties, this is something that David has been keeping management of throughout this entire time. And we talk about it, but this is a document created by David. And he does a great job keeping up with this stuff. And I just go in and say, how are we doing? He explains it to me. If I got further questions, he answers them right away. So I greatly appreciate everything that you've done on this. And it's, you know, this is complicated stuff and thank goodness you're handling it. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
You don't mess with the feds, so try to make.
Before you leave, could I add to something Mayor Husham said? It's been like, was it January of 2020 he started this document? 2020 or 2021, David, you started working with staff to 2020? So it's a couple of years he's had to start this, work with staff, maintain it and really keep us in line with the ARPA money. So thank you to you and staff for getting that done.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all of what our town staff does. And they certainly try to make us look a little bit better. I don't know what kind of comment. All right. All those in favor of the approval of the amended ARPA funds provided by David, signify by saying aye?
Aye, thank you.
No problem. Any opposed? Fantastic. Thank you. All right. Next up, we are going to a bond release for Ultimate Electric Twin Arch Business Park, Section 4, Lot 12A, Public Works Agreement. John, any comments, questions, concerns?
Yeah, no, there's no comments or questions. Basically, this is the final bond money that we're holding in securities for this project. It was, of course, started, started the development back in 2015. And it's, the project's been up and running and completed, but we've gotten approval from all the agencies for release of the bond.
So this comes in, the remaining amount of the bond, $107,455.70?
That's correct.
All right. And Barney, you're good as well?
That's correct.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of releasing the bond in the set amount, signify by saying aye? I'll call you back. Can we, can we record that as four to oh for right now? And John, can you take care of this while I keep on going, please? Oh, I just pushed a button. All right, I'm done with that. All right, we're moving on. Next up is the structural assessment, sorry, Structural Engineering Assessment Recommendations for the Flatiron Building. This is being presented to us by Barney. And I think this was just like a separate sheet of paper. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. I apologize. Barney, go for it.
Okay. So as requested, we went out for a request for proposals, for assessments for structure of the building, of the Flatiron Building. And again, this, this doesn't determine whether you keep or, you know, do, keep the building or get rid of the building. This is just an assessment. But it's a more detailed assessment than was done in 2012 where it was basically a visual inspection. This will be some actual destructive, non-destructive testing included with it. And so we reached out to seven firms and we received three proposals. All, all good firms. We looked at all of them and all of them have great experience. Of the three, the best proposal we found was from Albrecht Engineering. They took no exception to any of the requirements of the RFP. And so we recommend moving forward with them as, as doing the assessment. Now, as far as funding for this project, I know that was something that was talked about last time. And I think that's going to be talked about by the task force. So not recommending who's spending what on that.
Okay. I guess I was, you sort of caught me off guard a little bit. And when you made the statement of, I think, I'll just, I'll just say this and then I'll try to, try to clarify, is that this, this won't determine if the building can be refurbished or it needs to be demolished?
No, it's basically saying an assessment of the building. What would, what would it take to basically keep the building, to rehab the building? So again, it's not going to come back and tell you, take it down. I mean, unless something was seriously wrong with it, and I think we would know that by now.
Okay.
But it's, it's more of, you know, if you do want to keep it, this is, these are the things that it's going to take to preserve it.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Does anyone else have any comments?
Yes, I have some, some questions and comments. And the first is a general comment. And with all due respect to all the citizens who have made comments and given their views on the relative safety of the Flatiron Building and their expertise, I fully respect everyone's expertise, everyone's passion and everyone's efforts and what they've done. But I'm an elected official. My first responsibility to the citizens is for the safety of our citizens in our town. And for me to make a public policy decision regarding that building in terms of potential restoration, I don't believe anybody in this room can say that building is safe. To the contrary, the visual inspection done 10 years ago, there were 20 deficiencies that resulted from that survey, only two of which were addressed. There was a visual assessment done by the local government insurance trust. They used to insure that building for us. Through their inspection, they found numerous deficiencies, including deficiencies citing water damage and deterioration of the foundation. The town's own communication, in the Four County Catch Magazine, the town's own section in communications cited structural deficiencies, crumbling foundation, air quality issues and other issues. That's a town official communication. I am a public policymaker. When I see all of that, that tells me there are safety issues. No disrespect. And another comment, the legit review, after they did this visual inspection, coincidentally, they canceled the assurance on that building in terms of property insurance. So, and at the last council meeting, I gave about a 10-minute speech with my thoughts and observations regarding safety of that building. So if you have any questions about my thoughts and motives, please go back and review that. Now, a couple of questions. I asked for this and I would like to officially ask for it again. I would really appreciate seeing a copy of the contractor's proposal that was submitted because that will help me in determining if I think that's going to be a good enough assessment in terms of a structural engineering assessment, if I had to vote on such a topic. My concern is, we've done a previous assessment. Our insurance company has done an assessment. Preservation Maryland sent out an engineer, they did a visual assessment. I want to make sure that whatever we do, when we get the results, we're going to be happy with the results and we're not going to have any lingering questions about, gosh, you know, we missed this, we missed that, did we really take enough samples? So I am asking the town for a copy of that. samples? So I am asking the town for a copy of that proposal. Secondly, under your background section, you talk about the assessment will include, but it's not limited to, visual inspections, and then it goes on. I'd like to know what percentage of this assessment is going to be visual, and what percentage is going to be actual sampling and laboratory analysis of foundational walls, bricks, mortar, roofing materials, joists, et cetera. Because it seems to me, what we've been lacking is the real physical, structural sampling and a laboratory analysis of the materials of that building, so that we can, once and for all, have a good baseline for how safe that building is. Another comment, if, in the future, it is decided to preserve that building, my guesstimate is, that building will not be touched for at least two years. Because if you're going to have to get grants to do any work on that building, you're not even in a grant cycle. You probably won't even have grant money for another year. So as a council member, I want to know that if that building continues to sit, it's going to be safe to continue to sit there for another, you know, two years or so before it's either demolished or, or refurbished. So those are the, the nature of my comments. I would also think, if I were approving a proposal for sampling on that building, I would be drawing upon all the assessments that have been done so far. So I would be looking at the survey we did before, and, and the legit structural assessment, and all the areas where they've identified water penetration, and questions about, you know, determining the source of the water penetration. Those are certainly areas that you definitely want to be sampling. So I would hope that we will be giving to our contractor these studies, so they could build that into the sampling plan, and then that will be approved by the town. So again, in summary, I'm asking the town for a copy of their proposal. I think that's something that's, should be allowable to provide to me as an elected council member. I want to make sure, whatever we do, this will be the last word on the topic. We'll know if it's safe or unsafe. And I would think that regardless of what we do, restore it or take it down, you need a baseline of the condition of that building. Because if the task force moves forward and comes up with their preferred design option, you need to be able to compare, what do I want to put there versus can it handle it structurally? Last point, you're, under the background section, you talk about identifying, provide recommendations to repair defects, and a plan sketch to delineate locations of defects. Recommendations to, to repair defects. This is, this is using an assumption, I would think, that that building is going to stay in the condition it is. In other words, if it were to be restored, it would be restored with the current levels of floors and such. So that if you're making recommendations to repair defects, I'm assuming the town will assume that the various levels of that building will stay. And I've heard a lot of hazy statements about the Flatiron Building and the proposal to refurbish it. It was, it's going to stay the way it is. We might hollow out the entire building and make it so you can hang artwork all the way up the walls. All of that impacts, quote-unquote, what might be needed to repair defects. And then the last point I would ask is, is it going to provide cost estimates as well, associated with what it would take to repair the defects? Cost estimates or just, these are the things?
So it includes everything that you've mentioned?
Cost estimates also.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, council member.
Again, just, just one clarification. It's cost estimates of the structural items. So if it's architectural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, it's not going to give you those cost estimates. So it's just of the structural items.
Okay.
Thank you, Barney.
Okay.
Councilmember Munder.
Yeah, I'm kind of confused, because I was taking this as a structural analysis to, you know, to see what needs to be done to move forward with it. And I have people here tonight saying, this is going to be used as a reason to take it down and stuff. So I'm a little bit confused with that. But as what Councilman Demoto was just saying, there was an item that Barney sent to us September 7th, to all of us, that pretty much includes, under the scope of work in our email, everything you just mentioned. So I'm satisfied with the scope of work, that it will address my long-term concerns with it all. And this is kind of what I've been wanting to see all along, because as I said, 2012, we've, we've never had some type of in-depth structural analysis before. And this is what I was asking for, this is what I've been wanting, and it's kind of really a good starting point to really see, you know, costs associated with doing all this, if this foundation, if we're going to start proposing what, you know, undertaking what was proposed, if the foundation's not compromised by us doing it and stuff. So I'm satisfied with, with this. That'll at least give us a pretty good starting point to move forward and go from there, and really start having some discussions on, as you indicated, the safety of it, the integrity of it, even if it continues sitting for a couple of years before grant funding's available for it. But this is the type of study that I need to make an informed decision on. So that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you, council member. I am, I'm glad to see Barney, if you added this, thank you very much, because the, the task force, Mayor, you can chime in if you would like, that they were talking about the pedestrian tunnel through the bottom floor, and that was the, if we can do it, great. If we can't do it, we're done, kind of deal. So I'm glad to, to see that on there. And, and if they can do that, I'm hoping that this report shows whether they can or cannot, and then we can further move through. And that's what I was, we had a brief discussion earlier, and that's what I was alluding to, that I needed to see this. So thank you very much. Pam, just hold on, I'm going to go to Lynn, and then if you have any comments or concerns.
Hello.
Okay. Yep, hold on. We're going to go to Lynn first, and then we'll come back to you. All right, thanks.
A few comments. So I want to point out that we want an in-depth structural analysis, so hopefully, once and for all, can show that that building is not falling down. Right? That's what our goal is. That's why all these people are working so hard at the task force, and I'm the liaison too, by the way. So hopefully, I'll have a brief report later, because we'll get an in-depth report. So this will cover that. This will come back and say, this building needs to come down, if the in-depth analysis shows it's not structurally safe.
Again, I don't anticipate that it's going to say.
Right. Or they'll come back and say.
It's going to give you more of an idea of how much truly it's going to cost.
Truly it's going to cost, because I'm looking at the legit report that was just referenced by Councilman Demoto, and legit talked about water here, things there. I was in that building, and I felt completely safe. So walking through it and going in it. But I'll let the task force give that information. So thank you, Barney, for doing that, because this isn't to try to tear the building down. It's to basically show the building is, in my opinion, structurally sound and can be renovated and saved.
Thank you, council member. Councilwoman Reed?
Yes, I, I do want to remind the council that there was a 3-2 vote to take the building down. And the compromise that was offered by Council President Poyer last month included a structural assessment, but not at the cost of the town. It was very clear that it would have to come from either the Historical Society or through grants. And here we are, 30 days later, spending yet another $25,000 on a building that we've spent endless amounts of money on. Whether it was Design Collective for two studies that told us the same thing, previous structural assessments, it, it is, like, where, like, when you make a compromise, where, where does it hold? And that's a facetious question that doesn't require an answer. I do not support this.
All right. Thank you, councilwoman. I appreciate it. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I had some comments. And maybe we're a little bit out of sequence, because the, because certainly the task force, the chairman of the task force is here, there are several members of the task force here, and, and future delegate Boucher is here, who's came to our last task force meeting. So, so there's a lot of, a lot of people here who are interested in, in what's going on with the building. I'm actually, there are several things that you said, Councilman Demoto, that I'm in agreement with. You know, I, I do think that you need a copy of the proposal. I'm, I'm happy to have Barney send that to you and anybody else on the council who would be interested in that. I do agree that we need a, a baseline on the building. If it's going to sit there while we're going through grant cycles to try to figure out how to, how to fund the building, then we certainly want to know that the building is not going to, is in imminent danger of collapse. And so I appreciate that. But in order to get the grants, we're kind of in a catch-22. It's one of these things where you can't get the grants unless the town is committed toward renovation of the building, or restoration of the building. So we're kind of in a pickle, because, you know, the money's not available until the town is committed. And I think maybe what I have done, or maybe I need to back, walk backwards on, is to tell you that, you know, my vision is to, is, is for me to share my vision, that, you know, that building is a, is a gem in the middle of town. And I mentioned it the first time, you can call it a gem, you can call it a mole. It's, it identifies Mount Airy, and it's iconic. And I, I want the council to be on board and share in, in my enthusiasm and their enthusiasm in the renovation of, of the building. And maybe I just haven't, you know, come right out and said that. You know, that I think there's exciting things that could happen with this building, and we should move forward on that. And there's, there's no reason to keep, keep the debate going, because I share in the frustration as well. And it's been asked of me, it's been asked of, it could be asked of anybody at this table who's been here long-term, you know, why, why hasn't anything been done to this point? And that's because five years ago, the police department moved out of it. That's the last time the building was occupied. And, and it just kind of sat there while we kept throwing it back and forth. And I don't want to do that anymore either. But, you know, what I would like to do is, is have that commitment to move forward on the renovation of this building. It's just, you know, I think that at some point, we just, we diverged. And I'd like to bring everybody back together and, and start working toward the renovation of the building. But in order to get that started, we have to know what this structural assessment is going to say, a detailed structural assessment. And I'm comfortable with the fact that the council wants to see that. To Councilmember Reed's point, I do know that, you know, that we were talking about a compromise last time, but it is a town building. And I know that to get skin in the game, and as part of the task force report, I mean, they went right out after that meeting and started fundraising, and, and through the Historical Society. And so I know a few thousand bucks, I can't speak for them, but, you know, some money has been raised. They're trying to put skin in the game. You've got lots of people involved, lots of committees, and I think Lynn will touch on this. The group is out there, the excitement is out there toward a renovation of this building. And I, you know, I'd rather have the council come in on it, and let's get this done, so that it's not something that, you know, that we continue to debate. The only place where we diverged is that you had an option to demolish, or you had an option, option to renovate. I'm on the renovate side, and I, I hope y'all join me on that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Whatever side of the boat you're, you're on, we appreciate the enthusiasm. One of the other things I, that I did say at that meeting was that if we needed to speed up the process, that the town funds would be used to help speed up the process, knowing that, and I think I even said at this, at the last meeting, that grants were not going to be available immediately. So if we needed to keep the project moving, this is something that we would do. However, part of that, as Councilwoman Reed alluded to, that if we needed to get reimbursed, that, that would happen. But the, the grants needed to come first. And as you and I stated earlier, we're sort of at a crossroads right now. I'm willing to keep the project moving with the understanding that the task force will continue to raise money and fundraise, and hopefully reimburse some of that taxpayer, if not all of it. So with that being said, Barney did go out, got us a bid for Albrecht Engineering Incorporated, in the total amount of $25,545.78. We do have 2,000, 200,000 allotted, but I'm going to let, let you know, I'm going to keep an eye on that number very closely. But all those in favor for the town rec, town staff recommendation?
Just a moment, sir.
Signify by saying aye.
I didn't know we were actually going to vote on this tonight. I don't think it's premature to vote. We haven't even heard from the Flatiron Task Force.
I can certainly move it down one.
We haven't heard how much money they've raised. We haven't heard, which I, I've been tracking the GoFundMe page. We haven't heard their skin in the game. How much money are they willing to put forward? You put forth at the last meeting, your compromise that said, go out and get grants. The town is not going to pay for this structural assessment. You need to go out and make that happen. So my questions would be, I think, I think the Historical Society and the Flatiron Task Force heavily overlap, and I would like to hear, you know, Historical Society. How much money does the Historical Society have? Can they contribute? How much from the Historical Society? We have not even heard the Flatiron Task Force report. And even after that, I'm not prepared to vote on this until I see the proposal of what's going to be sampled, and where, and through what, what means. I think a vote on this, a decision on this, should be tabled until the next meeting. It's nice to know that we have a bid. It's nice to know some of the outlines of the bid. I need to see more detail. I need to hear what the Flatiron Task Force has done. And I think that you, as the person who made the compromise request, and the rest of us, are owed an explanation of how they're going to have skin in the game. We should not be voting on this tonight.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Well, I kind of disagree with you, Councilman Demoto. So I am making a motion that the council takes a vote on allocating $25,545.78 from the currently allotted $200,000 for the Flatiron Building.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We're going to take a vote. This is going to be till the Albrecht Engineering Incorporated, in the full amount of $25,545.78. All those in favor of the town staff recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So what, did we just approve the town spending $25,000? I, I have a follow-up question. Did we just approve of the town spending $25,000 of town money to pay for the assessment?
Yes.
With no strings, no strings attached in terms of, of reimbursement?
We, we have not yet gotten there. And during the last meeting, I am on video and record saying that, if we need to keep the, the project moving forward, that we will do this with the understanding that they need to get grants for things. They cannot get grants until we move to the next step.
But there was no official in writing or anywhere, or part of that vote, that required that they have to fund, fund this study?
We understand. Your comment has been noted. Next up is the Flatiron Task Force Committee Report. Is there a member of the task force here to do a report?
Good evening, Council President, council members, and Mayor Hushower. My name is Mike Eco. I'm the president of the Historical Society. I'm also the vice chair of the mayor's Flatiron Preservation Task Force. And tonight, I just want to thank you.
And tonight, I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to give you this status report and tell you what's been going on. We've been working hard as the group is growing, and we've been working hard to meet the objectives that were set forth in the town council meeting back in August 1st. The immediate goals that we've been trying to address are to obtain professional unbiased structural engineering study of the building to address whether the building poses an imminent danger of collapse, whether the building's integrity is able to sustain the intended envisioned use. And we've got a number of those that we've presented before. And also, the third and the big one is to make sure that we can provide that pedestrian walkway through the bottom of the building so that the sidewalk is no longer the pedestrian hazard that you've presented. We also plan to begin the appropriate fundraising so that we can put money into this project, or as you say, skin in the game. Since August 11th, we've gotten Councilmember Lynn Galetti on board as our committee liaison. And the Task Force has elected the following committee members. Larry Valais is the chair. He's out of the country right now, so he couldn't be here. I'm the vice chair. Diane Linton is the secretary. Charles Beck's a member. Rick Dyson's a member. Lee Hagewood's a member. Nikki Jeffries is a member. Olivia Kerner, who is in school, is a member. And Jim Molesworth is a member. To date, we've had two meetings, August 11th and August 25th. We established several subcommittees with 29 participants. We've got a finance and fundraising subcommittee, a government outreach subcommittee, arts and design, engineering and safety, plaza and streetscape, and public relations and Most of these subcommittees have already met, and they've already been setting agendas for what they're planning on doing. Although Barney has certainly gone out and already identified an engineering company, we went out, as soon as we were given this task, we went out and started looking at different engineering firms to come in and also University of Maryland to come in and do this study for us. We didn't realize that the town was doing the same thing. But anyway, we've conducted our own examination, as you've heard already from some of the people that are here tonight. We've been looking at engineering concepts. We've been looking at a variety of architectural concepts that arranged that building so that it can be useful. We've also established a media presence online, and we've established a fundraising site. And we've also gone out and actually started several fundraising campaigns. To date, we've only, we've raised 1,300, but we have several other fundraising events in the works so that we're going to be getting more.
Do you have an update on that now?
What's that?
Give that update.
We have an update on that now.
Oh, go ahead.
Over 1,300.
Oh, all right.
We've raised over 3,000.
Oh, all right, 3,000.
Is that from the online one? Is 3,000?
No.
Or just total?
Total, only online and the other things we've done.
3,000?
So far.
Thank you, ma'am.
But we also, like I said, we have several fundraising events in the works, including some haunted town tours, some dinner events and things of that nature. So we are working hard to put skin in the game. We're also working on a business sponsorship campaign, which we put together a letter, and we're hoping to get that out. We're actually going to hand-deliver those to local businesses. So accordingly, it's the objective of the Task Force to continue all the efforts that we've already started. We have been working hard to show that we want this building preserved. We want this building to be useful, not just preserved, but useful for town events and for various community projects. So as we go on, we, since the engineering study's already been approved, we don't have to worry about that. But we will have to go down the road and work with architects to design the layout of the building to make sure that that walkway can begin. As you've heard from us before, there's an intrinsic and commercial value in preserving the building. We think that it could provide a nice community center. And certainly, this is the centerpiece of the town right now. When you look down Main Street, that is what you see. And that's what you've been seeing for over 100 years. And we would like that to continue. It's a feature that brings people to the town, along with the museum, the train station, and other buildings in town. It's the old buildings that attract people. It's the older buildings that give us the historical designation. So we have a vision, we have a plan, we're working on funding. We would like to create, we would like to make this building the historic centerpiece of the town. So we thank the council for your time, and we hope you'll continue to help us get this building preserved. Any questions?
Thank you, Mike, for your report. If you can just hang up there, I'm sure there's a couple of questions.
That's fine.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
So thank you for your efforts. I do have a question. I would like to know, is the Historical Society willing to kick in resources to support the structural assessment, and how much? I'd appreciate an answer to that.
The only way I can answer that question is for us to sit down. We have not had our officers meeting to determine how much we would be willing to put forward.
Can you give me a ballpark of, those of you who are Historical Society members or are part of the leadership? How much money does the Historical Society have?
We committed to go at least half already.
Okay, so you're committed, as the Historical Society contribution, to be at least half of the 25,700?
Well, when I say historical, we're talking the Flatiron Preservation Committee.
Okay.
We have committed to go at least half.
Okay, so let me ask my question again.
Go ahead.
How much money does the Historical Society have in its account? And how much of that would you be willing to put forward to the assessment?
We have more than $25,000 in the bank.
Okay.
If that's your question.
So can I just clarify something really quick? It's my understanding, as the liaison and being at the meetings, that the Task Force has committed everything that they have fundraised for to go directly to the Flatiron Building.
Correct.
So more pertinent and fiscally relevant, what is that total right now, about 3,000? So all the current fundraising efforts you're doing are going to be going towards there, earmarked, and donators are being told those donations are going towards the Flatiron Building, correct?
Correct.
So right now, I think the answer to your question is, right now, they have 3,000?
Right, I understand.
I think the Task Force, so we're looking at the Task Force under the 501(c)(3) umbrella of the Historical Society, which is an IRS designation for nonprofit. Right now, you've got them working under that umbrella so donations can be made. So I think it's a question of, I'm not sure if you can answer that, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as the money the Historic Society is different pot from the money that, and I'm looking at the fundraising people, different pot than from what the Task Force is doing. So to answer the question, the Task Force, I believe, and we're in an odd situation because the chairman is out of the country, they will be meeting again, I think, I noticed, September 29th is the next Task Force meeting.
Correct.
And I think the chairperson will be back in town. So a lot of those questions you have could be answered. I'm not sure if they can give you an answer to that right now. I know as a liaison, I can't give you that answer because I can tell you, and I was going to do this in my report, but there's a lot going on. There's a, these guys are shaking and moving, these committees are meeting. The Task Force alone has met twice, but committees have met, correct me if I'm wrong, two, three, four times. Lee is on every committee, so he's probably met about a dozen times. So I'm not sure we can give that answer, right? Right, so it's, to answer your question, it's a good question. That might be something to put down for the next meeting to address, but I don't believe the Historical Society money right now, what their bank balance is, is relevant to what the Task Force is doing because, correct? Thank you. I'm looking at the money people as I'm saying it. I'm just winging it right now. So I don't think they can give you an answer to that question, but I think they can certainly add that to the agenda of items to discuss amongst the Task Force. And it really wouldn't be Historical Society, what are you committing? Because they're using the umbrella of the 501(c)(3).
I understand. And I wasn't expecting a definitive answer tonight.
Right.
But those are the questions I have.
And that's legitimate.
It seems like the Historical Society should be putting funding into the effort.
We are, we are. All the fundraising is being sponsored by the Historical Society. We have, our people and our research efforts are going into raising funds for this effort.
Okay. So I appreciate that, but that's the answer I'm looking for. The next question I have, and I appreciate all the committees and subcommittees, and I know there's a lot of activity. I would ask you to do this. I would give you a recommendation. I think your key focus right now should be getting the structural assessment done and paid for because that was part of the compromise that the mayor agreed to from Council President Porter.
And we agreed to it also.
And secondly, I really recommend, strongly recommend, that your main focus should be, what are you going to do with that building? Because I've heard you in a lofty manner, and that's fine, but I've heard everything from, it's going to be a community center, it's going to be the place for town events, it's going to be an art museum, it's going to be all things to all people, until you zero in on specifically what the purpose of that building's going to be and what the structure of that's going to be. Is it going to be a three-story, a one-story carved out? Until you do that...
And that's what our subcommittees are working toward, a plan to present to the council to show them what we envision. And again, it's been said several times, there's not a whole lot we can do without the council's backing. We are not the owners of that building.
Right, okay.
As much as we would like to do things, we are not free to do that. It is not ours.
Okay, last point I want to make, and I could go back through my notes, but I pretty much have it in my head. When we had a conference call with Preservation Maryland, I think it was January of this year, and several of us participated, the mayor participated, others, the head of Preservation Maryland made a couple of points. And some of the points he made was, you know, there can't be damage to the building in order to receive preservation funds. So my only, my things for you to take back are, if you look at the federal level and probably at the state level, there are different designations. There's restoration, there's refurbishing, there are different categories of what can be done to an old building. And depending on what you do, if you make major changes to that building structurally for any reason, to put a walkway through, to take out a floor, whatever, now you've changed...
Correct.
...the purpose of that building. And I know you think there are lots of grant opportunities out there, but depending on what you choose to do with that building, you may start to limit yourself on what grants you can get from what organization. Because some are going to require a full restoration, you have to check that box to get money. Some may allow you to make modifications and to a certain scale. So all that has to be factored in as you're trying to make a judgment about grants and where you think you can get the grants. So those are my comments. Thank you, thank you very much.
Mike, thank you again for your report. I got the report from Lynn, and I did send it to the mayor and the council of what you just gave us this evening. We did not get a paper copy. But Lynn sent us the electronic version, so if we can keep that going, I appreciate it. I heard you mention something about a structural analysis from somewhere else?
We were looking into, as Barney did, we were looking into different engineering companies...
Okay.
...and the University of Maryland to do that assessment. We did not know, at the time we started doing it, we did not know the town was going to...
All right, so are you going to hold off and wait for this?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you very much. And one of the things that I just want to reiterate, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, this pedestrian tunnel, this is what the Task Force is looking for to help with access along Main Street, right?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Lynn, and then I'll go to the mayor, okay?
Yes, I do want to piggyback on that. I have two comments. The structural analysis, the Task Force was getting their ducks in a row, and this was Plan B. If the town was not going to do the RFP, I just want to show the work they've done in going A, B, C, D. That was Plan B to get their ducks in a row if they had to go and get a structural analysis and do the fundraising. Number two, one thing Mike didn't touch on, and I want to point out, and this might answer some questions, is there's the main Task Force, and then there's five subcommittees. Architectural Concepts, Arts and Designs, and all these committees have about a half dozen or so members in each committee.
Yes.
Architectural Concepts, Art and Design, that's one. Building, Engineering and Safety, that's one. Plaza, Patio and Streetscape, that's one. Public Relations and Social Media, Grants, Finance and Fundraising. So I just want to point out to the council that they don't see what I see as the liaison, that these subcommittees are doing everything in every area. So they're looking at all the avenues and all the areas of that. And if you want, I could forward the agenda that shows you all these subcommittees, just because I had to pull the agenda up. But they're really going and they're doing it.
I think the agendas are on the website now. So we've created a Flatiron Task Force.
Yes.
And your agenda should be posted.
In summary...
Now you're official.
And you've got those subcommittees, and those subcommittees, some of them have met three and four times.
Yes.
So they're separate from the Task Force that has met twice.
Okay.
So I just wanted to point that out.
All right, thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. Steve, I think you're right about all the concerns moving forward, but I wanted to defend Mike and the rest of the Flatiron Task Force by saying that, you know, basically, I walked through the door saying, there's a vote sitting on the floor right now, that that building gets demolished. The first thing we have to do is save the building. Once we save the building, then we have to go down the road of what exactly, you know, there's lots of great ideas out there, and I agree, they are kind of scattered, but we need to hone them in. This is a great night for the Task Force, a great night for the Historical Society, and that we're moving toward that. And I would hope that the culmination of this, when the structural analysis comes in, is that perhaps the council could put together a resolution that, you know, that supports the preservation of the building. And that way, we can move forward with all these grants and make sure that we get the proper funding.
And you've got to understand, we've only been at this a month. So it's not like we've had a year or more to come up with all the architectural plans and everything else. We're just starting.
Okay, so thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, guys, and good luck in your next meeting, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to the master plan update. This is being presented by Councilmember Hunter.
During the end of this, I will probably look at you, Tom, to make sure I don't say anything that would be controversial or not legal. that would be controversial or not legal for the, just, so just say, hey, well...
You better pay attention.
Yeah, basically to make sure he's awake, it's, it's just one of those things that there's some contention out there that I want to make clear up to.
Let's go.
All right, I'll make it quick. As everyone now probably knows, that every 10 years, the state requires municipalities to review the comprehensive master plan or CMP. The town is accomplishing this via the Planning Commission and is working on doing this currently. I want to say, as has been the practice in the past, the PC or the Planning Commission is starting with the language from the 2013 master plan. That way, the town is not starting from scratch, so we're using existing language, so there will be some differences in it. During the review of the various chapters, we, we will be reviewing the wording to see if it is still relevant and based on current conditions. Some deletions, inserts, inserts, whatever, additions and changes are to be expected, so please do not get riled up because something might be changing, it's just that we need to update it for current conditions. I believe the plan for the, is that the Planning Commission at the best will work on a chapter or two at workshop and forward them to the council for review and comments and approval as they are completed, I believe so, if it works to the, to that. I also want to point out that late last year or earlier this year, the Planning Commission heard and voted on recommendations related to citizens' requests for property rezoning of their individual parcels. I believe that's just sitting to eventually be forwarded to us for our comments and look on. At the most recent workshop, the Planning Commission finished with Chapter 1 and started with Chapter 2. And as I said earlier, most of the chapters will be similar to existing wording, but I, this is important for the council to familiarize themselves with, but I urge the council to familiarize themselves with the items in the land use and zoning chapter in the current plan, which is Chapter 4. This is for several reasons. The Maryland Department of Planning in this update is requiring a more comprehensive review of housing in the community. This, this aspect is more commonly known as or referred to as the Housing Element. This is a result of a recently passed legislation by the Maryland General Assembly about a couple years ago, I, I believe, so we are at the mercy of the General Assembly to look at this. B, this is where the rezoning request for the individual parcels fall before the PC come into play. The council has three options when we're hearing the existing requests. One, agree with the changes. Two, disagree with the proposed changes or recommendations, which would leave the zoning as is, I believe. Or apply a zoning classification as the council sees fit for those parcels. C, during the review process for this CMP, the council has the ability to change zoning for existing parcels of land if we believe that another classification would be, would be a better fit for the needs of the town. A reclassification would have to be done for the, for, within reason, we would not have to be considered taking of a land or anything else. So I know, I know the Planning Commission has a lot on their plate in upcoming, but I hope we can get this done within the next six months or so, so we can get the comprehensive master plan completed and let it get the thorough review that the council and the citizens need, need to look at and require. That's it for my report at this time, am I legally good, Tom? All right, thank you. And I, and from time to time, I'll give, I just want to make sure that the council's aware that we will be seeing bits and pieces, chapter by chapter, so we can help the process along.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Munder, for your updates, we appreciate it. Next, we will go to commission appointments and reappointments, and I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I'm recommending that Nathan Birch be appointed to the Water and Sewer Commission. I believe Dick Swanson reached out to him as a chairman and thinks he would be a good addition, so that's my recommendation for this month.
Thank you very much, sir. There, how did I see the application?
I gave it to you, it was emailed via Colleen about last Thursday to us. It's, I mean, he's got a resume and everything.
Yeah, he put a resume and...
He's pretty good for the financial aspect of the water insurance, so I believe he would be a good fit.
All right. All those in favor of the mayor's appointment, Nathan Birch, to the Water and Sewer Commission, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Fantastic. All right. We're now going to move into ordinances and resolutions. And first up is what we had a public hearing on earlier. This is Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-2. This is on financing, purchasing, and budgeting. I, I will make a motion, is there a second?
Motion for what?
To, for approval.
I'll second.
All right, we'll go into discussion. Would any council members like to discuss?
Yes, let me give a little context to this, and then I have some, some thoughts. So, so I brought this forward because I think, I think when the previous version of this was voted on, there seemed to be a much stronger sentiment within the council informally that it would be rational and beneficial for the town administrator to indeed serve as the CFO. That coupled with the lessons learned that I've observed firsthand from some incidents of previous administrations in the town, and quite frankly, what I've observed currently with this administration on one or two instances. I think it would be beneficial to indeed have the town administrator serve as the CFO. Many, many other towns in Maryland operate under this system. Those mayors seem very comfortable and happy with it. Again, I spoke to a mayor of one of the towns, they love that setup, and two things they pointed out was, one, it gives them the time to do more of the strategic planning and thinking, but secondly, and most importantly, they said it takes the politics away from the town staff. It keeps political influence away from town operations. And indeed, if you look at different forms of municipal governments, and you look at the, the National League of Cities has put out a lot of documents and thought about this whole topic, and indeed, the whole purpose is to, to keep politics out of decision-making. So if, if a mayor is making a decision about a grant, or waiving some requirements of a business because they're not meeting the terms of a grant, as one hypothetical, if that particular business was a supporter of the mayor, if they had signs in their windows or donated to that campaign, that's political bias, and that should not be part of, of town government. And that's just one example. So, secondly, I heard some comments from the, during the public hearing section, and I'm not sure where this sentiment is coming from, but there's, there's, there's not, there's no, nothing in here that talks about the council having authorities and powers over the mayor. There are still checks and balances as there were before, it's simply that the administrator serves as the official CFO. I will leave it with this, there are a few sections in the document that I believe, and I agree, need some tweaking, and I was going to make those tweaks before the document came to this meeting, but I thought it would be better to wait. And because there are some tweaks, and for example, one of them is, I do agree that more than one person should be, have the ability to sign checks. There are a couple other places in there where there needs to be some duplicity and, and responsibilities. So because of that, I, I, I believe in, in this version of the resolution, I am willing to take this to a workshop where we can dot our i's, cross our t's, get additional comments, get it to be where the council is comfortable. But fundamentally, the document is to have the town administrator serve as the CFO. Another reason why I introduced this is because if you look at all the other towns where the administrator is the CFO, they are also the hiring and firing and supervisor official. So it's always a tandem set of duties. The administrator is always being the CFO and the hiring and firing official. So to me, as I looked at this, I thought it was important to follow that model moving forward. I saw that we were working on the hiring and firing charter resolution component, so it made sense to me to take an opportunity to rejigger this consistent with that approach. And again, I believe, based on looking at other towns, listening to other mayors, this would actually be a positive thing for a mayor of Mount Airy. Last point, this isn't about the current mayor, this is about future mayors and whoever might hold that position. So in the future, we could have a, you know, baker, candlestick maker, whoever, you know, a mayor can come from whatever station in life, whatever career, et cetera. The mayor position is a part-time position. We hire a town administrator for their knowledge and abilities in terms of managing a town, managing money, being a CFO. It makes sense to have those duties go with the town administrator. It takes no quote-unquote "power" away from a mayor. In my view, a mayor or anyone in a leadership position, you don't acquire power through words on a paper or words in an authority docket. You get power by other means, and I'll just leave it at that. So those are my thoughts. I'm, well, I'd like to hear from other council members, but at the end of this, I think I'm going to make a motion to take this to a workshop where we can really dot our i's, cross our t's, and take it to final resolution.
All right. Councilmember Munder, mayor, I see you.
Okay, thank you. As an author of the original charter amendment, that this may be based on 2021, and that we worked on with, that I worked on with Council, Council President Poyer, that we found, you know, compromised with the mayor to move forward, I don't see why this is needed. I can understand some of your logic and reasoning at times, but we had just finished the existing, the new one hadn't even gone into effect, and this came along, and as you indicated, we are working on other aspects of the charter. So this, in reality, should just not even pass for a workshop at this time, let us finish the rest of the charter amendments that we're working on, and to see how they, it can mesh all together. I, I can understand the difference in the separation of CEO and CFO. I looked at, I think, oh, I want to say 50 towns, 50 municipalities and towns of various sizes after this was introduced and looked at it. Some don't even have CFOs, CEOs, or the town clerk is a CFO and things of that nature. So there's a variety of ways of doing it, but some of those towns were much smaller than what we were too. We have a staff of, you know, 40. So I believe that we do have safeguards in place. I believe the earlier charter amendment has retained the safeguards, does retain a voice of the people in the mayor and the financial aspects of it, and I want to say requires almost that the, a, the position of mayor and the town administrator have a collaborative effort in the financial administration of this town, which is what my goal is, to, to have a collaborative effort, and then almost have the council that if there's a disagreement that, and we're the, what I, we call at work the final decision-maker on the disagreement. But I want the town administrator and the mayor to work together and come up with it, and then, because five bosses, or whatever you want to call it, is sometimes harder and more difficult than one, as the gentleman said, I can't remember.
Hippopotamus.
The hippopotamus analogy, so I just believe that we should wait on this and take it once everything's done, and not even workshop it at this time.
All right. Just, I just have a, just several comments that I really liked, the one of 2021-2. I think, as Councilmember Munder mentioned, that it was a compromise that I think we put into place already some of the safeguards that we were looking for as a council to make sure that money and monies were being spent the way that they needed to be. And I think we do have currently those, those protections as is. Those are my comments. Councilwoman Galetti, do you have any comments? Councilwoman Reed, do you have any comments?
I do.
Okay.
So I will say, just as a reminder, that it was Councilmember Munder that first introduced the charter amendment to change the CFO from the mayor to the town administrator. And I will also say, I, I am sorry, Council President, but it was you who actually supported that initiative. So I am really confused at how this council flip-flops. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
So I'm still sticking with, and I've talked to the mayor about this, we'll agree to disagree, no one has yet to come to me with a company that has a CEO and the CFO is the same person. Having said that, this has nothing to do with the current mayor, it has to do with the position, not the person. There are some flaws in there, people keep saying, what's the reason you did this? Sometimes we can't always divulge confidential information, but when they say there's a reason why they're looking into it, there's a reason why they're looking into it. I have some hard no's on this version, which I've discussed with Councilmember Demoter from a fiscal standpoint. I'm still shocked to find out that one person can sign a check. We need two people signing checks. So while I agree in part with some of these things, as far as the mayor and the town administrator, the town administrator gets paid to supervise the staff, to work on the day-to-day basis, no one's taking the power away from the mayor. We're saying, we're paying this person to do this job. I've got some hard no's on some of the things in here and some things I'd like to see in here, so I would like to see this go to a workshop, because I don't know if anybody in the public has read our code. Book is here, if you ever want to sit here one day for several hours, several weeks. There's a lot of flaws in our code, and there's a lot of things that need to be updated and corrected. So I would like to see a workshop to see if we can get to the point where we can take one of these and get everything in it that it needs, as far as effectively and efficiently letting the town operate in conjunction with the mayor. So I would like to see a workshop as opposed to, I know there's a motion in the second to approve this, I would like to see it go to workshop.
Okay. Can I, Katie, can we just clarify, like, as far as signing checks go? As, when I was acting mayor, I, I was signed on to also sign checks, and we made it the council president, the, the president of the council to, to sign checks as well.
Yes, correct.
So...
David, David can, or, town administrator can sign checks, the mayor can sign checks, and then in the absence of that, neither one of those people...
Correct.
...the council president can sign checks.
Okay.
You could sign a check for $10,000, and you don't need a second signature.
Correct.
So any one of those people could write a check for $10,000 with one signature.
Oh, you're looking for a dual signature.
Dual, in my experience, as a February agent, every embezzlement case I got...
Okay.
...from the newspaper, and then went in and said, sorry, you need to pay taxes on that $5,000 you stole.
Everyone was talking about a second per se.
No, it came from lack of internal controls of having two people sign the check. So we need that, and that's where I'm a hard no on this, and I want this, any financial person will tell you, you need to have that. So that's where I really want to...
Okay.
...fix this and fix things like that, and get this right and get it good.
But, Councilwoman Galetti, I just want to clarify something, and maybe Katie can chime in. This is not messing with our current internal controls, none of that, what we've done, and our internal controls have been vetted and good together.
Oh, no, I'm supposed to say that.
Yeah, 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 no, I agree with you on the dual signatures.
No, I worked in accounting, I... I know that we have a company that audits and they've never come back and had a problem with it, but I have a problem with it. I'm just saying, because that's what's in our code.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
No, our staff is impeccable and phenomenal. I know we've had audits done, and if there was an issue, we would have heard about it.
Yeah.
Because we get the reports, so thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I just didn't want to report.
But I'm a hard no, but a hard, things have to change, and we need to get at least one of these charter amendments correct. And I say, let's make it this one and then let's move on.
Um.
With input from us and with the mayor, working with the mayor, not against the mayor, not trying to get rid of the mayor and take away the power.
This whole thing's a can of worms. It's mainly a can of worms because what was passed, 2021-2, that solved the problems that were brought about last summer, is not even in that book yet. It's not even online yet. The people can't even see what the current law is right now, what the current charter is. So you're making changes to something that, that the residents can't even see what's going on unless they go back to the June agenda and then pull down 21-2, and then they could take a look at it from the agenda, but that's unreasonable. This isn't even in the books for the citizens to see it. So that's the, the first problem I have, is that we were one month out from passing that. And I'm not sure why this 2022-2 was even allowed to be on the agenda. I think it should have been scrapped at that point. Having said that, let's talk about the problems that did exist that generated at least this part of this charter amendment, the 2021 charter amendment. And that's the fact that, without naming names, somewhere in the past, there were mayors that were making expenses that the town administrator was unaware of until it after it occurred. And then after it occurred, a week later, the town administrator gets a bill on his desk and he's like, who approved this? And then he had to either sign it or, or go and talk to the mayor and figure out what was going on, and it just, it became unreasonable. So what 2021-2 did, and by the way, you know, the mayor's always been the CFO. In 2021-2, the mayor's still the CFO. It doesn't matter if it's me or some other body in here. What he did was it made the mayor have to go to the town administrator and coordinate with the town administrator for all these expenses. And that's pretty much the way I've been operating since November and had my opponent won in November and 2021-2 passed. She would be operating that way too. That's what it fixed. It fixed the coordination problem between the mayor and the town administrator. The other thing that was blaring out there was that we had a problem with water bills, and the question was, could the mayor waive a water bill or not? And the answer is no. So we clearly put that in 2021-2 so that could never occur again. Those were the two big problems. Those problems got fixed. And then a month later, for some reason, 2022-2 popped out. And what I would tell you is that I don't, I don't think, and I haven't asked, and I don't think any other mayor would ask, for you to reduce the responsibilities. When I ran for this job, I knew what I was going to have to face, and I've been doing it. So I don't see why, even though it's portrayed this way, I'm not asking for a reduction in my responsibilities, but for some reason, at least one member of this council has decided that that needs to occur. The people didn't decide. The people don't even know what's in the book right now. But for some reason, that's the way it's gone. I would tell you, I don't want to have another workshop, be it this charter amendment or any other charter amendment, without our town administrator there. He needs to be there because if you're going to add all these responsibilities to him, I think he has a right to sit there and tell you, based on his 40 years of experience, what worked and what didn't work. I think he's probably the most valuable resource we have, and up until now, we kind of had him sidelined, and we've been working on these issues behind his back. But I think he needs to get further engaged because there's a lot in here that brings it up. The biggest problem I have, and this is where I could see a real pickle in 2022-2, is that you make, you, you do keep the mayor as the CEO, but then you make the town administrator the CFO, and then you moved all the responsibilities over to the CFO, and one responsibility is do such other things in relation to the fiscal or financial affairs of the town as he deems necessary, or as the council may require, or as may be required elsewhere in this charter. So let's go hypothetical and say that we're back in May and that, and that vote occurs on the Flatiron Building. Okay, well, as a mayor, I stood there and said, no, I don't want the Flatiron Building torn down. Okay? So you take this document, this charter, and you go to the town administrator and you say, it says here, you got to do what we told you to do. And then he goes, yeah, but the mayor's the CEO. Well, now we're in a real pickle because we don't know who really is in charge, and we end up having to come to Tom, and we pay attorney fees, and we figure out, you know, where we're going to go. But I consider this, and I do think that you have portrayed it in this way because it's the only reason why you would be doing it, that you're trying to reduce the authority of the elected mayor, transfer that over to the town administrator so that you no longer have to come through me, you go to the town administrator. And I just think that's fundamentally wrong without presenting it to the people, and I would tell you that if we keep doing this, then it's going to go to referendum.
So, the comments, Larry. Item number nine that you just referenced about, do such other things in relation to the fiscal or financial affairs of the town as he deems necessary, or as the council may require. That was one of the modifications that I was proposing to make, was to put mayor in there as well, so.
You wrote it.
Anyway.
That's one of my changes too, with approval of the mayor. Or no?
Again, it seemed like there's, there's a, there's a questioning about why I had introduced this, and it seems to be, again, coming back to limiting authorities. I tried to explain myself, and I'll just try a short snippet again. Excuse me, I'm speaking.
It's okay, go ahead.
I see we're now working on the hiring and firing charter amendment, and my thoughts there are similar, that the town administrator should be serving as the hiring and firing official. And I already explained that in looking at other towns, CFO and hiring and firing kind of go in tandem. So again, it's nothing about this existing mayor, it's about looking at how the town operates in the future. I didn't open up this whole process, but once it got opened up, I'm trying to look at this and say, what's the best structure for the town of Mount Airy moving forward? That's essentially it. And I do, if there's going to be other comments, that's fine, but I would like to make a.
If you want to make your motion, we're ready.
I would like to make a motion to table 2022-2 so that we can do some fine tuning and tweaking and take it to a workshop. And I'd also like to see that workshop happen relatively quickly after the hiring and firing version that we're looking at. So my, my motion is to table this for the purpose of taking it to a workshop to continue working it. That's my motion.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'm sorry, I was asking it for clarification.
That's okay. He needs a second to table this.
I think technically it's, it's a postponement. Is that true?
I was just clarifying with the attorney, because we had a motion and a second already on the floor, but now this is a motion to table, so I'll second that motion to table.
But we didn't vote on that motion, so if we needed to adjust that motion.
Is that the appropriate term?
He said it's a motion to table, so it's okay.
So you have an original motion pending, it's been seconded, then there's an incoming motion to table. Has there been a second?
Yes.
Okay. So you vote on that motion. If that succeeds, then it's tabled. If it does not succeed, then you proceed to the prior motion at one of a.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. There was a motion to table, there is a second on that, so we'll, we'll take a vote on the tabling of Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-2. All those in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye.
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 Well, I was trying to get a clarification on this before the vote, but maybe I'll, before I cast my vote, maybe I need some clarification on something, Tom.
We're going to retake the vote since there was a hangup, but just hold off.
Oh, yeah, gotcha, gotcha.
I don't want to skeet anything.
No, no, I know what you're.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
So, so fine.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Hold on.
Yeah, she's good. Just put the, put the receiver here.
Yeah, you turned the mic off, John.
All right. Pam, I don't know where you got dropped, I'll just.
I would like to second Steve's motion.
Councilwoman Galetti seconded it already, and so we are going to retake the vote to table 2022-2, and we will, we will find an appropriate place to discuss this. All those in favor of tabling 2022-2, signify by saying aye.
Council President Poyer, I've got one clarifying question on the motion that I need to ask Tom for, sorry.
Okay.
Or we might need another motion to do what, to put it to workshop. That's what I want to ask for. If we're doing a motion to table, it does not include, I want to say, a workshop mentioned in that motion.
He did mention it.
Yes.
You did mention it.
Table it and take it to a workshop.
Yeah.
Is that what the motion, okay, I thought it was just being tabled because you're.
I don't recall what he said.
And we just redo the motion and just.
Steven, redo your motion.
I make a motion to table Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2022-2 for the purpose of then taking it to a workshop to further advance the document.
It's a quickie here. Instead of using the word table, I think you need to use postpone. If you table it, I don't believe you're supposed to change it. If you postpone it, you can make changes to it.
You may be correct under Robert's rule, I'd have to.
That's what I want to make sure.
Okay, so there you go. So just replace table with postpone and you're good to go.
Okay, so let me try that again. So postponing means it's not dead, we're bringing it back the way that I'm proposing. So I make a motion to table charter, I'm sorry.
Postpone.
To porter, to.
Postpone.
Postpone Resolution 2022-2 for the purpose of then taking it to a workshop to continue to advance it.
All right. Lynn, do you want to second that?
Does she want to?
Pam, do you want to second that?
I will.
Okay, there's the second. All right. All those in favor of postponing to bring back to a workshop, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, we will schedule the workshop when we get down to the scheduled workshops under unfinished business. Thank you. Next up is Resolution 2022-8. This went along with the road closer, but then has the resolution for open containers and alcoholic beverages. It was indicated that they did not yet get their alcohol license just yet, but if they do, this will approve that. I will make a motion for approval of Resolution 2022-8. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 No opposed. Next is Ordinance 2022-26. This is to convey town-owned real property in exchange for transfer of real property for the purpose of designing and constructing a roundabout. This is for introduction and to schedule, pardon me, and to schedule a public hearing. I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Pam seconds. Can we just do this next month, 7 o'clock? Sounds good. All right, 7 PM, October, two weeks, October 3rd? All right, thank you. Perfect. Next is Ordinance 2022-27. This is a budget amendment to allocate $2,833,618 of ARPA funds. This is also for introduction. I will introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder seconds. We'll see this again. Next is Ordinance 2022-28. This is a budget amendment to add $460,000 for rails, trails east of Maine. This is also for introduction. I will introduce, is there a second, please?
I'll second with just one slight comment on this one.
Go ahead.
Council President Poyer, I just want to put it out there that the $460,000, this is just a more of a housekeeping item. It was removed from last year's budget to balance the budget, so we're just reintroducing money that we already have. Nope, sorry, Katie, is it?
It was not removed, but it was not spent.
It was not spent, so we just.
The, the project kept getting delayed, but we passed budget today, so it's been more.
Okay. Gotcha. But it's, never mind, I'm going to dig a hole here. It's allocated, but it's not new, it's existing money we already have.
All right, we'll see this back again next month. Next is Ordinance 2022-29. This is a proposed text amendment to add residential component to industrial zone in certain circumstances. This is also for introduction and then refer to planning. I will introduce and refer to planning, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Councilwoman Reed seconds. Off to planning it goes. Sorry, Roxanne.
Yeah, the bachelor plan will be ready in 2024.
Thank you. Next is moving to unfinished business. This is talking about the revised green tree, mixed-use, community commercial, pre-concept sketch plan. This is for approval. John, do you have any comments?
I was going to defer to, if you wanted to have the representative for the owner give a brief statement, unless you'd prefer not to have that, and then.
I'm going to move to council comments before we get to developer. Gentlemen, do you guys mind just being patient, please? Thank you very much.
I do have some comments. I'd like to hear from my contemporaries first, and then I'll provide comments at the end. Thank you.
Councilmember Munder.
Thanks, Councilman DeMoto. I was hoping that you would go first, but I'll.
I have no problem, but I'd like to let you share with the citizens what you stand for.
Sorry. I mean, last month, I gave a pretty long explanation of why I believe this should be approved, and that overall has not changed, but I do want to point out that there's a couple of things that unfortunately, I view it as tying the council hands kind of at this stage of the pre-concept. Unfortunately, the town has, really has no legal ability to require for this zoning classification, any one type of housing unit. The current code states it needs, it not needs to be a mix, it can be a mix, or it can be a choice of, I believe, four different types, or three, or three different types. So they can, by so by its code states, they can pretty much put in there any type of housing they want, unfortunately. I know some, some comments that say, why not single family? I've given justifications why there's no, but there's also in the code for this zoning classification, there's no minimum lot sizes, there's none of, none of that. So it really not, I'm more faulting the code than anything else right now. It's unfortunate that the code has none of, none of those things because it really limits or encourages what can be put there from a council standpoint. It's also, this code does. It's also this code does not have, it does not state a percentage of a housing type like current code in some areas. Hopefully, I'll give a pun out to something I introduced last month, that I'm trying to introduce those things into the CC, uh, excuse me, to the MXD 2.0 I introduced to try and take some of the guesswork out of approving on this and kinda put some of the minimum lot sizes and other areas back into that. So that's my comments. I mean, they've addressed all the comments that I've brought up on, on this. So I'm kinda hard pressed to say no and go back and say, oh, go back to the starting board on this 'cause they've addressed the comments. They've approved it in some areas, not all the areas unfortunately that people want or council members want. But I believe historically perspective is that early 2000s, this started as a approximately 120-some units. It's always had a commercial component for it. Did not move forward into 2000s due to market conditions. Uh, the builders tried to bring it back, the once-approved plan of 120 as a, I wanna call it, a non-age-restricted use, which was allowed under the CC as a special exception. The town said no to that, so we restarted the process. Due to that being, it changed everything. So they started out with 120, wasn't approved, didn't like it. They came back, reduced the number, reduced the number. I think the second iteration of the most recent had 80 and a different design layout. They reduced it down to the current 65, uh, units of a mixed residential unit type versus all, all town, townhomes. But it's very unfortunate that due to the zoning, not unfortunate, the zoning requires a commercial component to be included in whatever plan they have. So unfortunately, from the neighbor's perspective and stuff, the commercial component has to be there to meet the zoning. Um, so that's about my comments on that.
Thank you. Um, I'll go next and just say that the, uh, two or three concerns that I had brought up last month, uh, those concerns have been addressed. You've gotten rid of some dead-end turns that led off to nowhere. You've increased the, uh, the play area or the open space. I see gazebo. I see, uh, a sport court now. To, to help maintain that, I'm assuming there will probably be some sort of HOA that will need to help monitor that, that area to keep it mowed and, and well taken care of. And I'm sure at that point, the HOA could institute other playgrounds or, or the developer could, whatever that, whatever that may be. I know some of the, uh, boundaries, uh, I see that you also indicated some trees or bushes or tall pines to, to help, um, buffer between the townhouses and the commercial. I think that will help a lot to, um, separate the residential from that, from that commercial aspect. As much, as much as I don't, I don't want, the plan fits, in my opinion, the requirements that, that I've asked for over, I don't know how long we've been going at this, probably a year and a half at this point. And we've seen numerous plans, um, from the developer to help mitigate any concerns. Other than just putting the townhouses and the villas and the single families with the commercial, I think at this point, they have, um, they have followed all of the guidelines. I, I can't look at this and say, hey, you still need to make a change here. I don't think it's adequate. I think with, unfortunately, the unspecifics to what our, our code indicate, they are very general and your interpretation of that can only take this so far. Do I want this? No. The choice after is commercial. Shh, all commercial. I am, I am trying to compromise with what I hear from residents and saying, this is what I'm hearing. This is what you guys need to do. I think at this point, the developer has addressed my concerns to the point where I can say, okay. But just to make it clear, I don't want this. But they have satisfied the plan that's in our code. Um, um, at, at, at that point, I'm taken out of the, the, the picture. The drive-through is still something that needs to be applied for later on down the road. It, it doesn't necessarily mean it will automatically get a drive-through. They are just indicating that if there was a drive-through, this is where, this is where it would go. Those are all my comments. Anyone else? Pam, if you're still there, do you have any comments on Green Tree?
Um, only that the, the people responsible for this development have met the qualifications of pre-concept and they are entitled to go to the next level. Um, I, I, Jason, I know you said you don't want this, but I do want this. This is a good thing for Mount Airy. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Galetti or DeMutter?
Since it's after 10 o'clock at night, I think you wanted to go last? You wanted to go last?
Yes, I wanna go last.
Okay. So at the workshop back in July, I, I brought up all the residents' concerns and a lot of the, the concerns were addressed. We want more. Obviously, I would be happy to have a ball field. You've got a court, so I guess you have to give and take and compromise. I'm glad Councilman, Council President Poyar pointed out the drive-through is not automatic. It's gonna have to get approved in the future. This doesn't mean a, a drive-through showing up next week. From a standpoint, I'm also, one thing no one's pointed out, in addition to some park open space, the court and the gazebo, 'cause that's my thing going after the open space and the parks, is the recreational trail that I believe is gonna connect over to other areas into Summit Ridge. So that gives us more walkability. Councilman DeMutter had asked for single-family homes along Main Street to be in line with the local neighborhood. They've put that. And if you look at the grading, which I've gone out and we've all looked at, I believe it's going to be, we'd be looking at Main Street, at the houses, the single family, and the grading is still gonna be down. It's not gonna be, everyone's gonna lose their view on Main Street 'cause these big townhouses are gonna go up and block the trees, if I'm not mistaken, right? The way the grading is, we're not gonna lose that view in the sunset. It's gonna be down. So I agree with, um, do we want development in the town? Obviously not. So, but we can only, we can only come back and say, here's what we want you to do. And they've, they've done everything we've all asked them to do from what, going back and looking at our meetings and our videos and our workshops. So that's all I've got.
All right. Councilman DeMutter?
All right. Um, so I've thought long and hard about this and hopefully the citizens, you have seen, I have been very engaged in all the workshops and all the council meetings on this particular development. I kinda sat down and I, I reflected on all this and for me, it comes down to first principles. So for me, first principles. Why did I run for town council? So usually every month, I try and do two things and you won't be surprised at this. I look at the 2020 community survey report. And then I also look at, this was, this was the flyer, this is the campaign flyer that I went door-to-door with when I campaigned to run for town council. And every month I ask myself, am I doing the things that I said I was going to do for the citizens? Am I being the person that I said I would be if I got elected to town council? And so I had a great opportunity to serve on the Growth and Development Task Force. I had a, I was pleased to have a, a role in that. I did the analysis of the data. That gave me strategic insights into what you, the citizens, wanted for the future of Mount Airy. And we made a bargain with the citizens. We said, you take this survey. You are the most important stakeholders in shaping the future direction of Mount Airy. You take this survey. We will listen to what you said you want and act on it. I went door-to-door and looked people in the eye and when they said, we take all these surveys, nobody ever listens to us, you just do what you wanna do. And I made a commitment that my going-in position on any issue would be what the citizens said they wanted as communicated through the town survey. These are citizens who sat at their kitchen table quietly, without fanfare, without a lot of noise, took the survey and said, this is what we want for the town of Mount Airy. The survey clearly says our residents want to strongly limit residential growth. In the 900-and-something comments that were provided as part of the survey, a major theme of those comments is we don't wanna see Mount Airy developed. We came here to get away from that kind of development. So for me, I'm here to represent what the citizens said they wanted to have happen in Mount Airy. It's not my pet projects. It's not what I wanna see happen. It's what people said. This is what I want for Mount Airy. And this is what I said in the survey. This is all what I want you to act on. That's a commitment I made to the citizens and I've always kept that commitment. So, um, that's the first statement. Secondly, I've looked at the updated plan. Couple observations. It's interesting that the open space amount, the total open space, it's actually less now than the previous version. The current version has 6.045 acres. The previous version had 6.257. So you lost about a quarter acre. Maybe that's not much, but it's actually less, the way you reconfigured your, your plan. Secondly, I do wanna acknowledge that you listened and you took out a block of six townhomes to accommodate more open space as kind of like a town square, um, portion of the development. So that was six that you took out. You also took out, I think, another nine that were budding up against the commercial space. So that's 15, um, that were taken out. But then, when I look at this plan, the net loss of units is only six. So basically, this, this is my, my words, you've taken those other townhouse elements that you've lost either through accommodating some single-family homes on Main Street or the ones you've lost abutting up to the commercial space. And you basically just tack them on to the end of Shoehorn Drive here, or whatever this is gonna be called, but it's this, this main, this main roadway up along the north side of this development. So now we just have this long row of townhomes, um, on the north side of the development. You've just tacked them on. So to me, it's a little disingenuous, you know? You, you could've just taken those townhomes out and just left them out and it would've given even more open space. Some of the research I've done shows that as mixed-use developments age, the ones that have more open space actually hold their value and are much more appealing over those that have less open space. In terms of the current ordinance, the ordinance says that the development for pre-concept plan should be approved based on considering the purpose and objective statements for mixed-use development. And I guess I'm just in a different position than my, my contemporaries here. I believe that although those are qualitative statements, I am told that I can use those qualitative statements as a factor in approving or disapproving a pre-concept plan. I continue to believe that you do not meet the bulk of the purpose and objective statements adequately enough as communicated in the ordinance with specific emphasis on B1, B3, and B5. And these address things like having a development that fits into the surrounding character and, and community and some other factors. So I do acknowledge that you have made some changes. I wish you would've taken that approach at the front end of the process and not the tail end. It seems like we had to go through a lot of discussion to get you to add in some of these mixed-use features that the ordinance calls for, for, for a healthy mixed, mixed-use design. But I, I, I look at this and it's, it's still to me, it's not right for Mount Airy. It's not what the citizens told me they wanted for Mount Airy. And I have told the citizens, I'm here to represent you and you alone, and that is my job. So that factors into how I will vote on this pre-concept plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I guess, uh, hearing, uh, from the other council members, uh, we'll, uh, move to a vote for the Green Tree. I guess I should've made a motion first and I apologize. I'll make a motion for approval for the revised Green Tree mixed-use community commercial pre-concept sketch plan. Is there a second on that?
Jason, I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor of the revised Green Tree mixed-use community commercial pre-concept sketch plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to scheduled Charter Amendment workshops. Currently, right now, we are working on 2021 dash three. And we are towards the tail end of that one. If we can get that in, uh, before the next council meeting, I would greatly appreciate it and I'll work around anyone's schedule, especially if I can be in attendance. That would be amazing. At which point, I think, um, I've spoken and I, and I don't, I hope I don't misspeak, but I think 2021 dash four and 2021 dash five, um, from, from what I get as a consensus, should move relatively quickly. And probably not both of those out in one night, but I don't wanna get ahead of myself. That would be crazy of me. So between now and October 3rd, Council Mayor and David, you might be on a, on a line there.
You're, you are on alert, basically, to attend, I guess.
You can call in.
Yeah.
Is there, uh, day that we can, that we should avoid?
Just the last Monday and Wednesday of the month, whatever those dates are, because they, that is EDC and Planning Commission meetings.
Okay.
So in terms of my work schedule,
Don't tell me you're flying every day between now and then.
Every day. Three, four, or five of, um, three, four, or five of October, which is before the council meeting, of course, I believe.
I think, uh, So I need it between, let's just say, September.
Okay. Can we do a weekend? Is that okay? No, just kidding.
You said just kidding, right? Oh, man. I was like, no way.
20th? How's the 20th?
That's beautification I got. I mean,
Okay. 26 or 27?
26 is planning.
I could tell you though, the beautification, she's done in like 45 minutes.
Yeah.
They could also meet upstairs in the macro potentially. I think they've done that to pass.
Or right in front of the elevator. There's a lot of room there. Okay. Who's the liaison?
Lynn.
Lynn. Lynn.
Oh.
I'm saying, if you do the twentieth, I know I can be here because I'd be here for that.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, uh, check one more thing here.
Is, is everyone okay with the twentieth?
Okay, so there is a Sustainable Communities Workshop is on the twentieth as well, but I think Melissa's doing that at five o'clock.
What time?
The twenty-seventh, is that what you said? On that Tuesday, yeah.
Forty-seventh.
What time we talking, Jason?
What, what was the sustainable thing?
Uh, it's the, um, the work group to get the grants for sustainable communities. It's, um, Melissa and.
Is that meeting in, in the chambers?
It, it is, but she does it at five.
Oh.
So, we could.
Oh, yeah, okay. Um, so if we did, uh, if we give her an hour?
Yeah, I think she'd be okay.
Okay. Uh, let's do, uh, six o'clock on the twentieth.
Okay.
I will show up in person.
So, in that one, you're just finishing three?
We're finishing three. When I schedule the one in October, um, I would like to do four and five in one day and then we can get, um, we can talk about the prior one as well. Okay?
Tom, you look like you have something to say.
No, no, I, uh, I'm good on the twentieth, but I thought for a minute you were scheduled on the twenty-seventh, I'd be.
I do have a.
We're talking six.
Note, I mean, we just approved a lot of training as well, so when, uh, when do you anticipate that?
So, um, she was not going to be able to start with us till November because she's booked in September and October, that's why I wanted to get it going in July, August, approved in September. So, we can tell her, yes, get her, get us on her books so we can get her schedule starting in November.
Okay. All right.
All right, everyone good? Thank you for your patience on that. And, um, at this point, we will move into council reports, um, and, uh, mayor report. And, um, while those reports are going, I have to use the restroom. So, everyone just follow along in the report and then move to the next person.
In the agenda, you mean.
In the agenda. All right, go ahead, Mayor.
We'll be quick.
Well, wait, uh, council president, if I may leave at this point?
Yeah, you're.
We are going, yeah, we're going into a show.
No problem, no problem. Thank you, Council Secretary, appreciate it.
Bye, everyone.
All right.
What goes on in Vegas stays in Vegas. Okay. For my monthly report, I just wanted to remind everybody that this is Recovery Month, the month of September for addictions. It's to raise awareness for addictions and mental health scenarios and so we're all wearing purple up here at the table, so in support of this month and that cause. I wanted to comment that Celebrate Mount Airy was a huge success and I want to give specific thanks to Melissa, Gina, Ashley, Nancy, and then there were several staff helpers as well as public works and the MAPD for pulling off this fun-filled event. Thanks, chief. Back there. The Mount Airy Senior Task Support Group is still running their shuttle service. Roxanne gave a, a great briefing beforehand, so I won't belabor it, I'll just tell you that Mass is still up and running and doing a great job. The Mount Airy Mile was held on August thirteenth, sponsored by the Rotary Club. With some help from the town, it was a great success, about a hundred participants and it featured a Paralympic gold medal recipient named Daniel Romanchuk. Pam left, so I'll just remind everybody Oktoberfest is September twenty-fourth, so come out and enjoy the event. We already talked a little bit about that Sustainable Communities or Community Legacy Grants, uh, meeting that's on the twentieth. Safe Kids Carroll County, Sherry Cates from State Farm Insurance and the Mount Airy Streets and Roads Commission will be, uh, hosting a car seat check from four to six-thirty on September fourteenth. Hope I didn't steal your thunder over there, Lynn. Okay?
Speeds it up.
The Town of Mount Airy Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting a Art in the Park event at ten AM September thirteenth at the Rails to Trails entrance to Watkins Park. The featured artist will be Fernando Lort. The event is free, but registration is required by calling Town Hall at three oh one eight two nine one four two four. And I'll just, um, that completes my report unless someone asks questions.
I just have two quick comments for your report, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
First off, I can't remember if I, I know I didn't, I'm not sure if you did, that the town has a new welcome sign at the north end of town on the.
Yes, Melissa got that done for us.
Yeah, the old packet said, finally, that's been, uh, replaced. And second, you are well aware that there is a tradition of Oktoberfest that the mayor shows up in lederhosen, uh, tapped the first keg, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I heard that's the, uh, council president who shows up.
Yeah, right.
No, it's the mayor and, and you got to tap that first keg in your lederhosen.
Yeah.
Tap the keg, but I don't look good in lederhosen.
Well, thank you, thank you for preparing, but we expect that.
Especially fishnet, lederhosen.
All right, I'll do my report quickly. Uh, there was no EDC meeting, uh, this month due to, uh, lack of quorum because people were on vacation, I was one of them. But I do want to say, do a shout out to EDC and Donna Marie of the EDC. Uh, they have started, they have started planning for the upcoming envisioned Mount Airy tour in 2023, so stay tuned for updates on that, that will be moving forward. Uh, the next EDC meeting is ten twenty-eight at seven PM here in Town Hall. I will do planning meeting fairly quickly. The planning meeting was held on August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two at seven PM. Uh, let's see, a one-year extension was granted for, uh, Lot seventeen at Twin Arch Business Park, uh, which is the case number S nineteen zero zero three two. Uh, they heard, um, arguments for the annex resolution, twenty-twenty-two dash forty-five, which is, um, the full, also known as the full property on Buffalo Road at the corner by Summit Ridge Park. Planning Commission gave that a favorable recommendation to come back to, uh, town council, so I'm expected to see that back here soon. They listened and discussed ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-five, which are the proposed changes to the APFO and MXD zoning district that will be continued and for discussion at the upcoming meeting. Uh, the next Planning Commission meeting is September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two at seven PM. During this past month, there was a community master plan workshop that was held on September eighth, as I mentioned earlier. Chapter one was pretty much completed and decided on, so, um, some rough changes and alterations will be done, but we should hopefully be seeing that soon here at the council. Chapter two was started for discussions. If I, if my calendar is correct, the next workshop for the, uh, comprehensive master plan is Thursday, Sep, Sept, the last, excuse me, October sixth at six PM here in Town Hall. And I do all want to put out there too, I sent you all an email, council members, an email regarding, uh, potential workshop dates. I heard back from two of you all, so I'm just waiting to, for the, um, discussion of the CC and NP ordinance as requested by the Planning Commission. I've heard back from two, I'm just waiting back to hear from the other, see if we can hold a workshop or not. Uh, that concludes my report for planning.
Next up, Councilmember DeMater, recycling and Main Street.
All right, thank you. Recycling and sanitation, our next meeting is scheduled for September fourteenth at seven o'clock. Upcoming yard waste dates are September twenty-fourth and then October eighth and October twenty-second. Moving on, the Main Street Safety Task Force. On behalf of the town and the task force, I organized a meeting which we held on August second with the Maryland Department of Transportation. Uh, we met with Mr. Andrew Radcliffe of District Seven and his team. And the objectives of that meeting were to build a working relationship with our state partners and to highlight some of the Main Street safety current issues as well as increasing safety pressures that are being imparted on the Main Street from some of the changes that have occurred over time and then those that are on the horizon, for example, from these developments that are coming up. Uh, the mayor, the town administrator, MAPD, representatives of the task force and streets and roads attended. Uh, some of the positive things that came out of it were specific action items in response to our request to look into changing the speed limit on Main Street to twenty-five miles per hour throughout Main Street. Um, the state is going to conduct a speed study along Main Street. This will involve the collection of speed data as well as the consideration of many other factors. Factors such as limited sidewalks in different parts of Main Street, frequency of pedestrians walking on the shoulder, and other factors unique to Main Street. One of the things I keep pointing out is, Main Street is almost like three mini streets in one. We have several sections that are thirty miles per hour, several that are twenty-five, different characteristics in terms of parks, schools, businesses, along the whole Main Street corridor. So, that'll all be factored into the decision-making. Um, they're also, also going to look at the feasibility of other measures such as narrowing lanes to provide, provide better pedestrian accommodation, adding rumble strips on the approaches to the downtown area, and increase and consistent use of white edge lines throughout the roadway interval and other possibilities for traffic calming. So, I think it was a very productive meeting. We've got a partnership hopefully moving forward. We've got points of contact we know we can work with and I think that was a major development for the task force. As a reminder, we do have a Main Street Safety Task Force webpage up and running and you can report speeding and other safety concerns there, get information on meetings and activities and such as well. We are in the planning stages to hold our next meeting, um, ideally sometime in September, but if not early October, I'm coordinating with our, um, chairperson for the task force to make that happen. So, that is my report for September. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move to Councilwoman Galetti, Streets and Roads and Beautification.
And Flatiron Task Force. I'll start with the Flatiron Task Force. As you know from their, um, presentation, there's been two meetings of just the task force since our last council meeting. The committees are having ongoing meetings. I just did get information from them that the murder mayhem mystery that they did that sold out right away will be, and I'm, unfortunately Commissioner Boucher left because he wanted to be one of the first people to sign up, so make sure Mary contacts him, please. Um, it will be starting in October fourteenth, every Friday, Saturday, Sunday, with a rain date of the following Tuesday for three straight weekends in October. It's on the Historical Society website to get information. The next task force meeting is September twenty-ninth, seven o'clock here at Town Hall. And then Streets and Roads, there was no meeting in August, it's every other month. The next meeting is Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, seven o'clock. Hasn't been determined yet if we're virtual or town hall. If we can get a staff member that can get us on live Facebook, we will be in Town Hall, so I'm waiting on confirmation of that. And, uh, car seat safety check is this Thursday, the fourteenth, from four to seven. The mayor mentioned that in the town lot in conjunction, Streets and Roads and Sherry Cates and the Health Department in Carroll County. So, that is listed on the town website, you have to sign up, so check that out. Beautification met August sixteenth. Uh, they're working on a five thousand dollar native tree planting grant at Windy Ridge that they got, they're working on the town ornament, town park and sign gardens, weeding and planting at all the parks. Look at their Facebook page, on Facebook, you can follow everything they do because again, as I've said before, they're always doing something. The next meeting is September twenty, seven o'clock, Town Hall, and that concludes my reports.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is myself for Water and Sewer and Mount Airy Sustainability. We did not have a sustainability meeting that is coming up this Wednesday, uh, nine fourteen, seven PM, so we'll be meeting here. Uh, my next Water and Sewer Commission meeting is October fifth, seven PM. Um, I wasn't able to attend the last one, um, I got three boys doing a whole bunch of different things, so we're playing zone, zone defense. Dick was kind enough to send me a couple of updates, so I'll just, uh, tag in with what he sent me. Um, they mostly talked about, uh, master plan input. Uh, the first one was chapter seven, Community Facilities, Water and Sewer. I'm just going to do the bolded part, Dick, if, if that's okay. Um, they want the master plan to emphasize the need for long-range planning with regard to infrastructure projects and the additional stress placed on the water and sewer systems from development and climate change. Um, they also had discussion about, uh, the WRE, which is Water Resources Element, um, should be expanded to, uh, include stating that it is an integral part of the master plan. Um, they also added for chapter three, Natural Resources Stormwater Management, um, for the following, uh, recommendations to be, uh, inputted, uh, eliminate all references to Gillis Falls since the exploratory wells failed to produce sufficient water to meet future needs and even if, uh, sufficient water was found, the cost to install production wells and pipe the water to the town would be, uh, prohibitive. Um, also number two, to include and emphasize long-range planning as the primary tool to address the stormwater cha-challenges of the future, which includes a, um, which includes a range planning as the primary tool to address the stormwater challenges for the future, the multi-year program, um, of stormwater upgrades, uh, to meet the future needs and the ever-increasing permit requirements. And then finally, number three, emphasize the need to address the impact of climate change on the current stormwater infrastructure and the design of new facilities as well as the resulting increases in required funding of more robust stormwater management infrastructure. All right, that was my report.
Jason, if I could just.
Oh, sure.
Climate change, um.
Hey, Dick, while you're walking up, or Jay, or Councilman Porter, can you send John and I a copy of that, please?
Sure.
So, so we can make sure it gets to the, into the, um, master plan.
I was just saying, one of the, uh, things about emphasizing climate change is MDE is going to require that in the new stormwater management permits. So, whether you like it or not, we are going to incur additional costs to meet the expected results of climate change over the next several years dictated by the state.
Thank you, Dick, appreciate it. Um, Town Attorney Report, Tom?
I do not have anything to report.
Uh, we restre, we received the Town Administrator Report Code Enforcement Zoning. Uh, there is no closed meeting this evening. Um, I will, uh, make a motion for adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Um, that will, for the, uh, adjournment, Holly? Holly, four, zero, Pam, since Pam left. Okay. All right, thank you.